Leading of the Navasota City Council's call to order on the fourteenth day of August, council chambers, let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you all for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And to visitors, if you would please sign in and if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor McVon, then followed by the pledges.
Y'all having fun yet? Let's pray. Oh gracious God, we are so thankful for the many blessings that you continue to pour out upon our city, our county, and all our staff, God. We just thank you for who you brought to us to lead our city. We thank you that your spirit's among them. We thank you that your spirit leads, guides, and directs them, that their conversations are graceful, that their conversations and their interaction with everybody are respectful. We just thank you, oh God, for all that you have done. We also lift up a special prayer for the tragedy that happened in Hawaii. It's hard to fathom. It's hard to explain. We just ask God that you send a spirit of comfort, warmth, and love to them, that you might give them strength to do what they need to do, and that we might participate in some small way. God, we thank you for our law enforcement and our first responders here in our city that are so conscientious in their jobs and their callings. God be with us tonight, that we may have a spirit of charity and joy as we conduct the business of the city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
What allegiance we give to God, like the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three, marks visitors, Deborah Richardson, first.
This is about the budget. I didn't want to wait till, you know, the agenda item, because I don't have anything specific to say, other than, please remember, like, the regular people in Navasota, like myself, on a fixed income, who went to the store to buy Campbell's soup can, and it was like $2.50. Everything is going up, you know, frozen corn is going up. I understand that the city manager and the workers are all trying to do what's best for Navasota, and they really are doing a good job in giving us choices. But a lot of the choices, really, in my opinion, are going to cost more than we can afford. So I would just like you all to keep that in mind as you're discussing the budget. There's some things I think we should tighten our belt a little bit. Maybe we don't need all the new people that are pledged, maybe we don't need certain pretty things. But I do appreciate what everyone's trying to do, but just kind of keep what I said in mind. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Johnny McNally at 4068 Highway 105 East, just outside of Navasota. I'm here not about the budget, but if you have something to do with the swimming pool and the budget, that's what I'm here to talk about. I hope you keep the swimming pool and the budget for next year. Had no idea what a great facility we have here in Navasota at the swimming pool. And Lisa and I decided to try it this year, and we went the first time, and we thought, yeah, we'll be going back. Wound up going once a week, then we started going twice a week, then we started going three times a week, and then we were going as often as we could. So the pool is a great asset, and really helped out my tan. So I really want to encourage you to keep the pool on the budget, and I'll be back again next year to swim in it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have any time left?
Sure.
I forgot to mention the staff. The staff is great. All the staff at the pool were great, and the lifeguards, and Lisa said I left them out, so there you go, thank you.
We can point out Ryan Hendricks in the back, he's Parks and Rec Director. Came in the pool, was his first thing to tackle, and he did well. Yeah, absolutely. Item four, staff report, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor, Members of Council, Public Works Director is going to come up and give an update on CIP projects. It's something you ask to be on every agenda, so a brief summary of our current projects within the budget. We're going to talk about new projects and some ongoing projects, but she's just got a brief update on our currency update.
Hi, Jennifer Rana, Public Works Director. I just have a few updates. We're going to start with the utilities at the hangar for the airport. Fairway Drive is now open, they won't have another day of closure. They've made it across to tie into the water mains, so that's going to be, they're ahead of schedule on that tie-in. So Fairway Drive is open tomorrow. Then we're going to move on to the street and annual maintenance. We have Gessner Engineer, they're going to be doing a final punch list, they're going to go out and do the measurements, and then they'll submit their final payout on that. Within that punch list, they're going to have the contractor resweep the roads. I don't think they did a very good job of sweeping that, so we'll get those contractors back out there to sweep the roads again. The capital improvement project for the utilities and street CIP, contractors are still on Sycamore, they're currently working on the sewer line still. They're about halfway done on Sycamore, only on the sewer. There's other utilities that we've got to do on that street, but we're about halfway up on Sycamore on the sewer line. And then the large clarifier that's at the wastewater treatment plant, that began last week, that will be commissioned probably at the end of this month, maybe next month, up and running again. Any questions? Okay.
Did that finish the work on the wastewater treatment plant?
No, sir, that's just part of the, the others are the rotors.
Yeah, we've had some of it that's been waiting until the fall to get the parts intact.
Yes, sir, that's the large clarifier, those came in, they started installing the parts for that last week. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, one other thing, I'm sorry, it's not CIP, but the Brose Street Sidewalk, is there any kind of, that's coming up pretty soon?
The Brose Street Sidewalk, that hasn't been officially awarded to the lowest bidder yet from, it's going to be announced, and I think you're going to probably see some movement on that, probably late fall, early winter.
Okay.
Correct, John?
Yes.
Sound pretty good? Okay?
John McKay, graduate engineer. The Brose project, E-Bet's been really pushing that one hard, they've got, the bids came in high, higher than there were funds, but she went ahead and got us some extra funds secured for TechStop, so over the next month, TechStop and the contractor are going to be working through bid bonding contracts, all that fun jazz to award it. One of the longest lead time items is a bridge over the creek, so you're probably not going to see a ton of movement besides layout and setup for a while, because you start now, you're just going to start, stop, get off, and come back when that bridge shows up. So that's why it's looking to award next month, but you're not going to see anything until late fall, movement-wise. And that's all through TechStop, but we're keeping our eyes on it.
Did that problem get eased up somewhat with the tree being falling down?
I'm sure it did. It's sad to see that tree go, but that tree was right going to be in the middle of everything. But it's still, it's a, that bridge, they just, TechStop predicting that's a six-month lead item.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just coming up here this Friday is the Last Sounds of Summer concert with Lost Boys, seven o'clock, and from City Hall, right now. Bring out your chairs and pull them out and join the fun. And coming up on the 23rd here in front of City Hall, the Grimes County Youth Football Association will be having their pep rally at 7:00 p.m. to kick off their season. That's the 23rd. Then down the road a bit, now on September 9th is the Bonnie and Clyde Comedy Musical at Brose Auditorium jointly with Navasota ISD, it starts at 7:30. And like any other city events, you can always go to visit, or visit Navasota Facebook page, or the City of Navasota Facebook page, or navasottx.gov is the website, so get all the information there and buy tickets for events.
Mayor, do you want to go back and ask if there's any board and commission updates?
Yes. Board and commission updates from council.
Mr. Mayor, the planning and zoning had a meeting last Thursday, and they approved the final site plan for the wildflower.
Mead.
Mead, in the old utilities warehouse.
The airport board had met last week, and they were discussing that Fairway Drive was going to have to be shut down at the same time the construction was, but obviously they finished a lot quicker than they had anticipated to get all of that done, and everything was coming along great there for the AWAS was online, all of the wonderful things, and Michael Dearing gave a report that they had a bunch of the, what is that club called? The Eagles?
Young Eagles.
The Young Eagles, and they had 23 students that got to fly with five pilots, it was all wonderful, kept up with them for Navasota, and all the programs out there, they're all wonderful. And if you have children that age, I would suggest between the ages of seven and 17 to send them, it looks like a lot of fun. Is that my miss? That was it, right?
All right, thank you. Item five is a consent agenda, that we have the minutes for July 2023, court report for 2020, July 2023. Second reading of ordinance 1026-23 authorizing restricted prior service credit for employees who are members of the Texas municipal retirement system. Second reading of ordinance 1027-23 authorizing settlement with the proposed fuel reconciliation of Entergy Texas. And the second reading of ordinance 1028-23 amending Chapter One, general provisions, Article 1.04, boards, committees, and commissions of the code of ordinance in the city of Navasota, adding Division Five, creating the Navasota Music Friendly Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Does it need to be with the changes?
With the change from one year to two?
That second reading has the, yeah. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Foltz to approve the consent agenda, and further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed? Seeing none item hearing. Item six, consideration possible action on the Navasota fiscal year 2023, 2024, proposed budget. Mr. Weeks.
Members of council and our audience, we have before you the proposed annual budget for next fiscal year. So keeping in line with the city's mission statement of what America wants to be, a beautiful, progressive, vibrant, service-oriented, close-knit community filled with historic charm and promise for people and business. Earlier this year, in order to move forward, we conducted a strategic planning sessions. So on April 4th, we had a consultant that came in at the town hall, and they were seeking feedback from our citizens and community stakeholders. On April 5th, a consultant met with multiple focus groups, which had various stakeholders in mind, whether it was related to our industrial partners, to our retail, we had some health, healthcare providers, and our education, and some other stakeholder groups. And then on April 18th, the management team met with the consultant to go through some strategic planning workshop with the facilitator, and then on April 19th, city council and myself and the facilitator met to come up with what we consider the 2023-24 strategic plan. And so the strategic plan is a two-to-three-year plan, even though it's labeled 2324, that's just the year that we're implementing. And it had numerous goals, and so kind of wanted to go over those, because this budget has been created based on a bunch of items that were in that strategic plan. So goal number one, we got appear, planning and economic development. So one of the things in there is to plan for smart growth while maintaining a small-town charm. Within that, one of the items was to develop a comprehensive plan that includes zoning, subdivision ordinance revision, and also looking at our comprehensive plan, and as well as a housing development recruitment plan. So within the budget, we've included $300,000, which we expect to receive a grant for that will help fund that project. Additionally in there, we had to hire a main street director. As you many know, that application for how main street cities in Texas are being selected now has changed, and so that's on hold until the application process has been determined. So within the budget, we did include, so you can see the numbers of what that would look like if we ended up moving forward with the main street, because it requires you to hire a main street director for that. And so that's on hold, but the application we are moving forward with. Goal number two, marketing communications. The city of Navasota will facilitate a two-way communication with people who live, work, and play in Navasota, and offer those residents and visitors quality family leisure opportunities and events. Within that goal there included a two-year marketing plan, which is in progress, we're working on that currently. Evaluate resident communication tools such as Blackboard Connect. So one of the duties of one of the new positions that's be adding is to take that position and lead with that. Survey residents on how they get their information and other information collection. Earlier this year, I came to you with a survey opportunity, and we have since, staff's reached out and found a much cheaper, better tool that we thought that would be able to address that concern, so that's included within the budget. Launch the new Navasota website, which is Tourism EDC, as you know, that's in progress. Our marketing and media specialist that's been added in the budget was also assist with that and getting those moving forward. And then reevaluate community events and their budgets. So within the budget, we're not proposing any new events, basically, other than the Sound, which has already been released, the inspirational music talent event that's going to be happening in October here in downtown. So mainly, we're just going to work on improving our current events. For goal number three, quality of life. So quality of life is something that council has asked staff to focus on, and it's to create, enhance, and improve program offerings and recreation facilities. We're looking at exploring recruiting partnering with Boys and Girls Club, or YMCA. So myself and the mayor and some other staff members and members of the community are working with Caldwell and the Boys and Girls Club out of Bryan, to hopefully bring some type of service here. And so we're in the progress of working on that. To offer at least two programs per year, so as you hear staff come up and talk about the Parks and Rec budget, you'll see that that's been included in the budget. To offer at least one event per quarter, well, we're already kind of doing that, so we will continue doing Texas Birthday Bash, Sounds of Summer, Home for the Holidays, Freedom Festival, which all we're going to do is try to work to make it better. Add our handsome park and recreation facilities once a year. As we get toward the end of the budget presentation, we're going to talk about capital projects, and so within there, we've got several different enhancements to our parks. Goal number four is considered what we call staffing, and so develop a staffing plan. As you've already heard from a resident, you know, staffing is a huge concern here. As I, when I first was hired, one of the things, first thing we noted within staff was compensation. So this year, this current fiscal year, we hired a compensation consultant, they came in, they worked with us, they worked with council, we approved a compensation study within the budget, we implemented the new compensation plan. So that was step number one. Step number two was, we need additional people to help do things. And as mentioned throughout the strategic plan, there is staff burnout, there is workloads, and staff continues to experience that, so we're adding nine new staff members. Within that, you also ask to add stipends or certifications or miscellaneous designations or qualifications, so that's been included in the budget. And then also, as a secondary priority, you ask us to evaluate leave time and increase if warranted. So at our next council meeting, we're going to have a work session before the regular meeting, and we're going to bring to you a couple of benefits that really aren't tied to any money, but it's some benefits that we can provide some of our employees, and so we're going to bring that to you. And then, as mentioned, last year, you approved tuition reimbursement, which Never Round got a policy together, so we're going to bring a tuition reimbursement policy to you. So we've got like three or four policies at a workshop next council meeting to discuss. So that addresses the staffing piece. Goal number five was human resources, to develop, plan, and attract employees and leaders, train them, and ensure retention. One of the things you noted in there was improved new hiring, onboarding. So again, with adding one of the new positions, that position will take lead on helping out with the new hire onboarding process and working with Ms. Peggy and HR to get that going. And then the other one was improved boards and commission member onboarding process. And so our city secretary's office has already started working on that. Her and the executive administrative assistant have already started that process. Goal number six, facilities and buildings, to construct, renovate, and maintain city facilities based on current and future needs. So as we talked about public safety, we've been discussing the need for a new fire station. The mayor has appointed two council members to a committee, we've met, we've identified two locations, and so next year, the fire chief, his responsibility is to work with my office and try to identify that location, nail that down, and then start working on some design. So that's planned for next year. And the last goal that you identified was goal number seven, infrastructure, budget for continued improvements of existing and new infrastructure, as well as smart planned growth. Within that, you had maintaining your infrastructure, streets, water, wastewater, and gas, and repairing the infrastructure. Both of those are included in the current proposed budget. And then the other thing is new construction of infrastructure. So within water, as you know, we issued bonds earlier this year, and those bonds were for some of our major utility projects. So we are going to do the construction of the water tower, the water well, and water plant. In addition to that, on the natural gas side, we issue debt and working on our new Hollister regulator station, and we've got some grants in for other gas regulator stations that were, hopefully, we'll get awarded some money for that. And then the last, but the looping, the natural gas system for Pecan Lakes in order to do that. So that's included in the budget. So when we look at the strategic plan and area of emphasis, the budget has been developed around those goals and objectives that you've established through the strategic plan process. As we look at toward economic development picture, we've got several residential developments that are ongoing, Pecan Lakes Phase Four, Hidden Hills Phase One and Two. So it was before, we just had Phase One, they're progressing real quickly now, so Phase Two's in there, and then Pecan Grove, we're working with that developer. In fact, they emailed me today and would like to sit down with me and have some discussion about their development. On commercial side, of course, we've got the North Side Market, so if you've driven North LaSalle, you've seen that, they've got the actual parking lot is all paved in with the entrances paved, and so hopefully, that'll be up and going pretty soon. We've got completion of the Jack in the Box, Team Elliott Ford, the Young Life Building remodel, Navasota Welding. So all of those for commercial. And then when you start looking at historical residential building permits, currently right now, year-to-date, up through July is 56. Last year, we were at 82. Now, let me remind you, slowing of the building is not related to, has hardly anything to do with the interest rates. Interest rates are up, but when the houses are becoming valuable, they're being sold. What has slowed down the process is trying to get transformers. And so transformers were a year, were supposed to be a year out, and now they've turned into a year and eight months, and I think Phase Four, I think I saw that, someone said they saw the transformers out there lined up. So Hidden Hills got theirs first, and so that's why they're already able to move on to their other phases, because they were able to get theirs up and going, they put their request in before Mr. Hassel did. So we've got that. And then we look at our historical new improvements in personal property. Thirty-three, nearly $34 million added to our rolls, and bulk of that is from your Team Elliott Ford, your Jack in the Box, your churches, not churches, Chicken Express, those buildings, along with Navasota Welding. So you've got a lot of new commercial that's added to that, as well as a bunch of our residential developments. We talk about budget highlights, and so since we've got a lot of people either watching or in the audience, I want to kind of update people on how government budgets work, and how, when we talk about all these different funds tonight, what that means. And so there are two different type fund groups. We have governmental funds, and we have what we call proprietary or enterprise funds. And so proprietary enterprise funds are those business, are those funds that operate like a business. And so your water, your sewer, and your natural gas all fall under the proprietary enterprise funds. And so what happens is, you charge fees to pay to operate the services. Where on governmental funds, they're specific, so for general fund, general fund is where everything's categorized, that's where your police, fire, parks, general government, your public works, all of those are funded in, and you don't have a specific revenue source coming in. So for instance, if we only could pay police based on municipal court fines, we wouldn't have a police force, because that's not what the police force is for, it's not to get fined, and get fines and fees in. Same way with parks. If parks was only operated based on the fees we charged for rentals, we wouldn't have a parks fund. So we have to use a lot of different resources, and those are sales tax, franchise fees, property tax, you know, our pilot, payment in lieu of tax, what we get from industrial partners. So all of those go together and pay for our general government items. And then we have what we call the debt service fund. Debt service fund is a fund where the INS, the interest and sinking portion of your tax rate, tax rate's made in two components, your M and O, maintenance and operations, and the INS, which is interest and sinking, is what we pay our debt from, we pay our principal and interest from. And then we have what we call capital projects funds. And capital project funds are exactly what they are, capital projects. These are multimillion-dollar projects, this is where your, the 2020 street and utility CIP project that our public works director talked about just a while ago, that's where that's paid out of. So your big ticketed projects, that's where that's paid out of. And then you've got special revenue funds. And special revenue funds are just like what it says, special revenue, so hot funds, so hotel motel tax funds. So when you go to stay in a hotel, that tax you pay for that hotel room, those funds go for a specific use, or grants. So we get grants, and they can only be used for a specific use. We get money for cemetery, so cemetery space, if someone goes out and purchases a cemetery space, those funds can only be used for the cemetery, and so that's why it's called special revenue funds. So you add all that together, and that's what creates all of our different funds. And so when we started our budget process earlier this year, we use what we call the line item concept, so every account number that we have, staff's supposed to go in and give us a little bit of detail about what you're purchasing. So if you've got a budget item for $50,000, myself and finance wants to know exactly, what is that $50,000 making up? What makes up that amount? Is it a specific contract, is it a specific service, or what it makes up? And so they're supposed to go in and line item that information. Our current proposed budget is divided into two segments, continuation budget and supplemental budget. Continuation budget is those services and programs. budget is those services and programs and people that we currently have doing the same thing next year, maybe an increase due to cost, maybe increase due to materials, or something like that. And then we have supplementals. Supplementals is new people, new services, a new vehicle that we've never had before, that's not a replacement, or a new program. And so that's what fits in there. And you add those two together, and that's what gets to proposed budget. And so that people understand, governments are supposed to provide what they call a balanced budget. And so there's a lot of misnomer about what is balanced budget. Balanced budget is the beginning fund balance, what's in your checking book at the beginning, plus your revenues, minus your expenses, and then factor any adjustments for depreciation or non-cash items. And that equals your ending fund balance. The general fund, the water fund, your natural gas fund, and your wastewater fund all have requirements of 25% fund balance. And that's 25% of operating expenses, which is about 90 days capital, working capital. And so a balanced budget would mean that you have to meet those requirements, and we do. All four of those funds have excessive, when I say excessive, that means above what the amount is. And it's not a lot, but it is above it. So that means we have a balanced budget. So for instance, when we go forward, we'll look at, for instance, the water fund. The water fund has $10 million-plus of expenses, but only $5 million of revenue. Why? That's because this year, this fiscal year, we issued debt of about $5 million for the water tower, the water wells, and the water plant. So that, the revenue came in this year, but we haven't spent it yet. So next year, you won't have that revenue, but you're going to have to spend it. So if it was the case that revenues have to equal expenses and net to zero, then we would never be able to do the projects. And so you have to factor in that beginning fund balance. And it's all good. It's all about having policies in place, which we do, about what we use fund balance for. So looking at your budget highlights, so we are proposing a decrease tax rate from 55 point, we're right at 55.6 cents to 52.2 cents. And so that represents about a, I think it's $3.39 tax decrease. And then we talk about utility rate increases as reckoned in by the consultant. So earlier this year, back in, I think it was January, our consultant came to us that we haven't looked at rates since 2013. So we hired a consultant. That consultant came in and gave us recommendations. Here's what it takes to keep up with the operations and the capital projects that are needed in order to operate our water, wastewater, and natural gas system. And so they propose, they propose a different rate here. So within your book, we have those proposals. And everybody that's here and that's watching can actually go onto our website and click on the budget document. It's toward the very back, and it has those proposed tiers and how it's working. And so the main thing is, is that council provided direction to staff. We don't want to implement these in March. We prefer you to come back in October and just do the increase then. And so that's why it's increased being proposed for October. And yes, the percentages are double digits. And so for the water, the water rate increase is 17%. The natural gas is 22%, and the wastewater rates are 38%. We've not increased the rates since, I think it was 2001. So you've got 22, 23, and now 24 budgets. So you've got three years. If you take those amounts to divide them by three, that comes out to 8% for water, 7.3% for gas, and 12.7% just for our wastewater. Moving forward, what council gave us direction is, we don't want to have these increases again like this. So staff, we need for you to look at these on an annual basis and incrementally increase these throughout the process. And so based on what the consultant has provided us, at a minimum, those increase would be 8%, 11%, and 7% over the next four years. And so every year, we will come back and we will look at what revenues are and how we're doing with our revenues to determine if these percentage increases are needed or what is needed for. And so I want to make sure that you understand that we had, we brought to y'all, remember, two scenarios back in January. One was March implementation with another increase in October, or do the only increase in October. And so what you see before you is that increase for October only. And within that, again, within this budget document, I did provide examples of residents that might be using 6,000 gallons of water, six MSFs, and that's how our gas is determined is by MSFs, and then using our winter average with a wastewater usage of 3,000 gallons. From the water, that would mean an $11.53 increase. On the natural gas, it would be a $7.67 increase. And then for our wastewater, it would be a 13.25 increase for a total of around $32.45. Now, with that, the water rates now are going to have tiers. And so as you meant, as when we went through the utility rate process and went through the rate-making portion of it, that was one of the things that was recommended, that we do tiers. And so those with 0 to 2,000 will have to pay less than those with, that use over 15,000 gallons of water. So number one, it creates a conservation opportunity. So there are multiple rural water districts currently right now that you're only allowed to water one time a week, one time a month, and are telling you, some of them don't even, that one you can't even water. We've not had to do that. And the reason is, is we manage our water system very good. And so we want to make sure that there is volumetric rate to, I guess, foster a conservation measure, as well as those that, those that use a lot of water, pay for it. And so you'll know, I think when we looked at it, it was only about 10% of our users used 15,000 gallons or more. The bulk of everybody used less than that. And then we talk about pass-through trash rate. So last year, you agreed to enter into a multi-year contract with Republic Services. Part of that contract said, on an annual basis, in July, they would bring us, look at our CPI adjustment. And that CPI adjustment says there's a 7%, 7.7% increase. And so for a resident with just a poly cart, that means a monthly increase of $1.69. So that's what that amount comes to. The next item there, added new staff. So we added nine new staff members. And as we go through everybody's department's budget, they'll talk a little bit more about those positions. But there's nine of them total, with one of those being in the water wastewater, the wastewater fund. So that's the budget highlights for that page. Also, the TMRS rate, so TMRS rates decreased from 6.31% to 6.24. I know within the strategic plan, that council had the desire for, to move to a, from a 5% mandatory to a 7%, two to one with a 20-year retirement. That would have cost a half a million dollars. And so there was no way for us to be even entertain that this year. But luckily, we did receive a small decrease based on our 5% that we currently have. We also, within the budget, we are looking at adding a cost of living adjustment of $1 per hour for all employees which are grade seven and below. And that would include all our special pay plans. So many of our police, dispatch, fire, and our, some of our public works are all on a special pay plan. It's just the way that the consultant put us on for compensation plans for that. And so all of those employees would get, receive a dollar per hour. So what does that mean to the employee? So for non-public safety, that would be a $2,080 increase. And so based on your, the lower on the pay scale, so if you're grade one, 2,080 is a higher percentage than somebody of grade seven that gets 2,080, because they're higher up on the scale. For our police, and these are sworn police officers, the amount is 2,184. And that's because they were, they're required to work 84 hour every two weeks. And so that's how that comes out. And then it's because they're on a 12-hour shift. And then for our fire, it's a little bit more. I think it's $3,068, and that's because they're on a 24-hour shift. So the $1 hour is only for a portion, because then you have to factor in the overtime for that. So that's included in the budget. In the budget, we were proposing promoting nine employees, and so we'll talk about that a little bit further. We've added the stipend for certifications and miscellaneous designations. We'll be coming to you at another date to nail down a policy related to certifications. We're just putting the budget in there. Currently, right now, the police department is the only one that actually gets certifications. And so as I mentioned, we'll come back to you with the policy and review that policy with you and get some feedback for it. But we definitely wanted to be sure to put the numbers in there for that. There's been no significant changes in employee health benefits. As we talked about the last time, it's actually a decrease for the city and for the employee. Really didn't have the net adjustment when we put the presentation together, but there is no significant changes there. Our fund balances, so fund balance for the general fund is 28.6%. Fund balance for the water fund is 68.3%. Fund balance for the natural gas is 27.4%. And fund balance for the wastewater fund is 55.1. We have several different requests that came in. We had a total of nearly $4.7 million of requested supplementals. And so those are new people, new programs, new equipment, whatever it was, new. And we are proposing to fund 1.6 million of that, with the bulk of that around 1.4 in the general fund. Also included in some of these supplementals was a dump truck needed for the streets, street and sanitation division, some replacement of, much needed replacement for our chairs and tables and blinds and ceiling fans at the Navasota Center, and some other things that were related to our utilities fund. So kind of give you a big picture here. So here is the total revenues and expenses for the entire budget. So we have a total of $36.2 million coming in for revenue, and a total of $43.7 million for expenses. And then we have what we call internal transfers. And so internal transfers are those transfers that one department has to send to the other. So an example is, the water fund has debt that it needs to pay. As I mentioned earlier, that debt's paid out of the debt service fund. So the water fund has an expense. So part of that $10 million includes expense for that debt. But when you go down to debt service, part of that $2.1 million is a revenue for it to come in. And then on the other side, then you've got the amount going out. So the internal transfers net those things out. That's why those two numbers equal. And so, you know, when you talk about, what is the city's total budget? Well, our total budget is actually $38.7 million. But to a normal person wanting to know, hey, what's the city's budget? Most of the time, they're referring to the general fund. And so when people ask me, hey, what's your budget? Well, I just let them know the general fund's around $15 million. And so if you get questions, this does get confusing. It depends on what answer you're trying to get, because if you're asking, what's, how much are we totally going to write a check for? Well, that's 38.7 million, because you take out the net payments out of that. So when you look at this a different way, we look at it chart-wise here, again, your general fund revenue is your largest, 37% of the revenues is in general fund, followed by your natural gas at 18%, water at 16%, and your wastewater at 7%. And your capital projects is a large portion there at 14%. And that we'll discuss toward the end of the meeting. Expenditure-wise, again, general fund being 34%, water being 24%, and natural gas being 17%, and wastewater being around 6%. When we talk about general fund, we got our revenues here. When you look, you look over, what was the increases and decreases there for our revenue? And so part of the things that you've got to think about is, what are IDAs? So IDAs are industrial development agreements. So if there is a business out in our industrial area, they pay 50% of the assessed valuation on our tax rate. And so those agreements are, they come up in October. So working really closely with legal counsel to get those renewed. So you'll see those over the next couple of months come to you as we work with the partners out there. But that's what IDAs are. We got what we call pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. So those are payments that are utilities that we have. So we have a water, we have sewer and gas. The revenue it generates, they pay a fee of 9% on their gross revenue. And that's similar to franchise fees. Franchise fees is your electric, so it'd be Entergy, Mid-South, and then Century Link and...
Optimum.
Yeah, I can't remember. Optimum, yeah. So they pay a franchise fee. And it's used for, they're just like the pilots, they're used for of the right-of-ways that we, that the city owns. And so law allows us to charge what we call franchise fees or payment in lieu of taxes for those. Sales tax is a slow increase there. We projected, like I said, 6.9% increase. Mixed beverage taxes are increasing. As you know, we've had, we've added on to some of our local bars and establishments here. So Speakeasy's open, Relling Rise up and going, and those continue to see service as well as Redboard Tavern. And so our mixed beverage taxes have increased. License and permits, can't tell you exactly why, it's $10,000 down. It just, it just happens to be a couple line items that netted out. But charges for fines, again, we've had a police department that's been fully staffed for a year now. And they've done a really good job of staffing. Not that the police department tries to get fines and fees, but there are, the municipal court fines are up. And again, most of those are from speeding and from other violations. And they have increased significantly from the previous year when we had some hard time trying to fully staff our police department. Solid waste, basically, that increase is based on the 7.7% that we've increased the rates on. And then other, again, those are related to miscellaneous grants and stuff that we're not projecting to get for next year. Let's talk about the tax rate. So tax rate, proposed tax rate is, as I said, is .5221 as opposed to .5560 that we currently have. As I mentioned earlier, that's broken up into two pieces, the maintenance and operations rate, which is .4689. We work really closely with the Grimes County Appraisal District, and they help us do the calculations for this. And so those calculations were run through them, and we worked with them, and going to be doing our notices for the tax rate very soon. And you've got other items on the agenda tonight, so we place these on a future agenda to take action on and have public hearings. The interest in seeking is the portion that we pay for debt, and that's right at 5.32 cents. The average home value increased from $168,000 to $181,000. And so the voter approval tax rate is the max tax rate that we can assess without going to the voters. If you remember, it used to be, your rollback tax rate was 8% of the effective tax rate. And so you could go up to the rollback rate, but if you went over the rollback rate, someone could petition you to have a vote. But if you, if they didn't petition you within a certain period, then you could do that rate. Well, now, the state legislators came in and said, no, no, no. Now, if you go over the voter-approved tax rate, you will have an election. And so that's why the voter approval rate is the, that's why it's called the voter approval rate. That's the max it can be. So what does this mean to a resident? So average homeowner tax... So average homeowner tax will increase twelve dollars and fifty-one cents in two thousand and twenty-four. That's based on the average home value. So if your home value is more than a hundred and eighty-one cents, don't come to me telling me that well, I'm spending more than twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. So what is that twelve twelve dollars and fifty-one cents? That's that's three cents a day. That's what that increase that increase means. Sales tax, so once sales tax, I want to make sure everybody understands how sales tax is calculated here. So the state allows a total uh tax rate of eight point two five. That's the highest sales tax rate you can have. So the state gets six point two five. So if you if you sell a car out there, the state gets it, but we don't get anything. So when you go and purchase a a car at 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 Elliott Ford, that benefits nothing from the city. It only benefits when you go and have to have it serviced, and we get the sales tax from that. When you purchase the vehicle, we do not get any any sales tax. The state gets six point two five on that. The city gets one, one and a half of the eight and two two five. And that is broken down in multiple things. So back many years ago, the city had an election and voted to allocate a portion of that point five percent to EDC, which is uh the four B, so we can use it for community development and economic development purposes. So it's point two five percent. And then they also, the voters approved, to use point three seven five percent for property tax reduction. And so when you look over to the right there, you'll see our sales tax uh revenue that we projected for next year is around two point eight million dollars. That's citywide. Of that two point eight, uh the EDC gets uh point one uh one two five. Uh but that three that point three seven five uh is uh five hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. So when we calculate how our tax rate's calculated, we take the total amount, and then they have to deduct the five hundred and eighty one sixty-eight, because our sales tax helps subsidize our property tax. So uh the general fund gets one, one percent. Something you might not know, the county, Grimes County, is one of, I think, a hundred and something counties that gets the other half percent. And so that other half percent, the county is obligated to reduce their property tax. So I want to make sure council understands this. So everything that we do in the city of Nava Sota to promote shop local, let's build up uh um and shop here, and we increase for. All that sales tax revenue you keep increasing from two point eight to three million to four million, they have to use that point five of that increase that they're getting for property tax reduction for the entire county. So we are we are subsidizing Grimes County in general for the property tax reductions related to sales tax. So I want to make sure that council understands that, because we I didn't address this last year about the half cent. And so I want to make sure that you understand, the county gets around eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from sales tax that's supposed to be used to reduce Grimes County's portion of their property tax.
It's generated in.
That's generated in Nava Sota proper, but for the entire county. Property valuations and tax rates. So property valuations, um they did not go up as much as they did the year before. A year before was seventeen point nine five percent, and this year was fourteen point nine three. So we went from right at nearly six hundred million to six hundred and eighty-nine million dollars worth of valuation. Again, the average home value increased, um our tax rate is decreasing. So the average property tax is around nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Again, back to um that twelve-dollar amount. Uh general fund expenditures, so general fund expenditures, the majority of that um column right here, where we talk about amount, the change at the end of your estimate versus proposed, so that that a million dollars there. So kind of want to walk through that. So general uh administration, and and again, you'll you're gonna see these numbers, you're gonna hear some of these similarities when we go through each department's budget. But the increase of the three hundred and seventy-eight, the bulk of that is three hundred and sixty-three thousand that we budgeted for purchasing uh three parcels from Union Pacific. So that's in that amount, as well as um uh additional position and the survey. When we look at the police, the police increase of uh policing of animal control of around five hundred and four thousand. Uh again, your supplementals is gonna be a huge portion of that. They also have the radio lease. If you remember, earlier this year, we approved doing the radio leases and paid those out over a period of time, and now we got new radios. So that's part of the increase. And it also in that is um a projection to sell some seizure, state seizure uh vehicles and using those seizure funds to purchase a UTV uh off-road vehicle for specifically for police to be able to use in events, as well as when we have issues with the train down, um the police can actually get in the vehicle and drive down, so we don't have a conductor that's having to walk two miles to figure out what's broke, helping them out and maybe speeding that that process up. Um in IT, uh in technology, in technology increase there, um it's under information technology of around a hundred and thirty-one. The bulk of that is moving to the latest N-code, which is N-code ten, which is a whole different platform. Uh and then sanitation increase, again, that's offset by the Republic Services cost. General fund summary, so beginning fund balance, um for next year, uh we're proposing right at nearly five point seven million. Thirteen million coming in for revenue, fifteen million going out for expense of a negative one point three for unassigned fund balance of uh four point two. The requirement is three point seven, so we do have a a a small excess amount. And the percentage of fund balance i- is basically four percent higher than what our fund balance uh policy says of twenty-five percent. And this is a slide that we did last year. We we I'll do this on every fund. It's kind of a snapshot. Uh everything listed on this page represents seventy-eight point seven percent of the total budget. So we have personnel, so personnel is around seven point six. Personnel represents around fifty point four percent of the general fund budget. So half the budget is personnel. And that includes existing salaries and benefits of six point six. The salary adjustments, including best uh benefits, which is that one dollar per hour, is around a hundred and eighty. Certification pay, including benefits, is around thirty-two thousand. The promotions with benefits is around thirty-six thousand, and the addition of the eight employees is around six hundred and seventy-one thousand. Non-payroll supplementals, those new items represents nearly five hundred and twenty-eight, nearly five hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The Republic Services garbage contract, which is an expense, is in there, is one point nearly one point three million. Annual street maintenance program, so that is the the annual program that we currently do, is four hundred and sixty thousand. Capital lease and purchase payments. So the practice of the city has been that when you want to do a capital item, you would issue small five-to-ten-year debt, short-term debt, and they call it lease-purchase agreements. Instead of issuing um tax-free bonds, like certificates of obligation bonds, uh which would be supported by your interest in seeking. We've done the capital and lease purchase payments through these short-term, which pulls down on the amount that we can use for maintenance, true maintenance and operations. We're using it for debt purposes, and that's a that's a practice that we have to move away from. And so as we, when we get further in, we talk about the capital projects, that's why you're gonna see it's in the capital projects. And we talk about other funding sources. It we can't keep continuing to do it based on your maintenance and operations portion, because that capital lease portion there represents nearly five cents on the tax rate. So you're spending five cents on the tax rate to pay debt payments that should be on the INS side. Remember, the state legislature came and said, you cannot increase your revenue more than three and a half percent. There there's a there's a max there. Now, it doesn't include your new improvements, that's for existing properties. So right off the bat, if you're adding new capital here, you're you're eating up that that portion. And so that that's a huge amount of debt payments that's coming out uh for capital lease purchase payments. So we've got our Texas Birthday Bash, uh which is in there, it's around four hundred and nineteen thousand. Annual mowing contract, uh we've budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand in the past, that contract is up, we've got to rebid it. So of course, we upped it, uh because we don't know what that amount would be, but so we budgeted it three hundred thousand. As mentioned earlier, we got purchase of three parcels of land from Union Pacific, it's around two hundred and sixty-three, two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Motor vehicle gasoline, just so everybody knows, how much we spend on gasoline is around a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We've got, the only payment that we have related to um debt is related to the the twenty-twenty uh street and u- utility projects that the Public Works Director got up and spoke about earlier. So uh the some of the money we get for the street and drainage uh program, we s- send that over to help subsidize that interest in seeking amount. So a hundred and twenty-four thousand gets sent over that, and electricity uh is around a hundred and twenty-four thousand as well. So again, out of the total fifteen million, right before you is right at nearly twelve million dollars, or nearly seventy-nine percent of the budget is right here in front of you. Water fund, so water fund, talk about the differences there, the main difference is down toward uh, so the the water sales. So increase in the water rates, um seventeen percent, uh even though it looks like it's thirty-five percent there, it gets you to s- uh nearly eight hundred thousand. And the reason is, there are other um, there are other items that are included in the water sales. We we also charge for water meters, late penalties, and those type things. And so those are, those are included, uh not penalties, uh just the water meters and those type things are included in that eight hundred thousand, as well as um the water, the different water structures that we have for base rates, for volumetric, as well as uh the base rates based on your meter size. So those commercial customers that have larger water meters, a two-inch, three-inch, four-inch, are gonna have to pay a higher base rate. And so that's why it it looks, it looks a lot larger there, and that's the reason. Uh the other two big items down there, grant funds, the one point nine, that's the ARPA funds. Again, we're 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 planning to use ARPA funds for uh the water tower and water well and uh that big project out there um across from Cal Talk. So that's the funds for that. Again, we've already received the funds, it's just that we can't, we can't record the revenue until we get the expense, the revenue and the expense have to be in the same year. And so that's why you see uh grant revenues increasing there, is because we budgeted for it last year, but we haven't spent it yet, so we can't recognize it as revenue.
That grant doesn't fully fund it, though.
No, sir, no, sir, the the, so that's the next item. So you see bond funds, bond funds is the difference. So back this current year, you'll see we were, we received four point seven million dollars of bond proceeds. So we're not issuing bonds next year for this, and so that's why there's a negative amount there. Talk about the expenses. Again, um the majority of uh that nine point nine one seven amount right here, six million of that is related to the CIP. Four million for um the water tower and water plant, and then two million for the water well. Talk about the major uh budget items in the water fund. So we have ten point four million dollars worth of expenses in the water fund. What you see before you here is eighty-nine point two percent of the total amount for that. Personnel, personnel is a, only represents five percent of the budget. So we talk about, you know, are you personnel-heavy? No, we don't really need more personnel in there to operate the system. The bulk of the cost is for operating, the actual cost of the system itself. And so you got personnel cost of five hundred and eight, with existing personnel of four hundred and eighty-eight, salary adjustments of around twelve thousand. Uh certification, we do have some employees that's got some certifications in there, so it's around four thousand. And then promotions, there's some, a couple of promotions in the water fund uh for supervisory uh reasons, is nearly forty-five hundred dollars. Capital items, as I mentioned, was six million, with two million for the water well, four million for the water tower, water plant, and ground storage. Debt service payments, we pay one point two million dollars comes out of the water fund to pay for the debt related to our capital. Uh reimbursement for general fund for costs, so over the the next three funds, water, gas, and wastewater, you're gonna see the these two items. You're gonna see the pilot and the reimbursement for general fund costs. So reimbursement for general fund costs, the personnel up there, those are personnel that specifically work on water. That's all they do, is work on the water um applications. There are multiple other departments that indirectly have um salaries that are paid out of the general fund that affect water. So for instance, I'll pick on finance. So Mayor Bell's group um has utility billing, and we have a meter technician that goes out and makes sure the meters are done correctly. All of those are related to these funds. And so each of the utility funds pay a portion of sixty percent of her department, because sixty percent of her department is relate, is the people in there are utility fund um workers. Uh and so that's what that reimbursement for general fund cost is. Uh pilot, a- as I mentioned earlier, that is the uh revenue, the total revenue that the water fund receives times a percentage for on gross revenue. So that's what that amount equals. Electricity, we pay around a hundred and thirty thousand for electricity to operate our water uh facilities. The fire hydrant maintenance program, so you remember, we just did a huge CIP project for fire hydrant ma- uh replacement. Uh we want to make sure that we keep maintaining that. And so there are other fire hydrants, we need to go out there and continue to maintain, and so programmed a hundred thousand dollars for in that. Twenty-one thousand sixty dollars is what we, capital lease purchase payments. And so those are related to enterprise, so enterprise, uh we we lease all of our vehicles, and so that's capital lease purchase payments, and then motor vehicle gasoline. So again, what you're looking at is eighty-nine percent of the expenses related to the water fund. Water fund, when we talk about fund balance, uh good, uh the auditors came, I mean, the rate consultant came back and said, um the uh rating agencies, when we start trying to issue debt, um had a a comment that we need to make sure that we are working to bring up our fund balances and our utility funds to make sure that we are covering debt. We have a one to two times our uh debt coverage. So i- if that payment over there is is one point two, we need at least one point two, so we got one point seven. Ideally, it's not a one-to-one, usually it's a two, two-times coverage. And so the idea is to try to start building up your fund balance, so that you can have those um additional fund balance to cover uh debt payments. Natural gas, so natural gas, a- again, uh the bond proceeds, that negative one point six, that has to do with the bond proceeds that we issued. Uh those were a hundred, uh one point three million was for the Pecan Lakes uh gas extension uh loop system. And then around three hundred and fifteen thousand was related to the Hollister um regulator station. Uh both of those projects are not finished, so we don't plan on issuing debt. So the money was received this year, and so next year, we don't have that revenue, so that's why there's a big difference. And again, when you look at the gas meter sales, that's the gas uh rates increasing, so uh going up approximately uh ten percent for uh revenues. On the expenditure side, uh the proposed budget of the gas distribution, um again, that one point one million dollar increase amount that's over there, when we talk about uh gas distribution, uh that is, that's all related uh to the um the two CIP projects um and mainly related to the gas loop system. Um so we have spent some funds this year, but the main construction of that has not occurred yet, so that's why there's still a bulk payment to be paid there. As we look for natural gas, major fund items, getting a little higher here. So of the seven point six million dollars that we have budgeted for expenses in the gas fund, on this page represents ninety-seven point four percent of those expenditures. Personnel, personnel, two hundred and ninety-one thousand eight eight fifty-five, which is two hundred and sixty-six thousand for existing personnel. That one dollar per hour equates to around nearly ninety-five hundred dollars, the certification pay around forty-three hundred dollars, and then promotions of around eleven thousand four hundred and sixteen. Gas purchases, so uh we purchase gas, and and council um earlier had approved a gas contract uh for us to purchase with um a ga- a gas provider. And so uh that amount, uh we pass a hundred percent of that cost on to uh our customers. And so that amount, we pass a hundred percent of that cost on to our customers. So whether it's a resident or whether it's industrial partner or commercial, they pay a hundred percent of the cost of gas. Now, what you see in the other items here is related to the operations. And so we have to charge a fee for the operations. And operations is the system in general. So the four point three is to get the gas here and it's the gas. But once it gets here, we have to distribute it and maintain the system. And that's what it represents the other portion of the expenses. Again, we get to the reimbursement for general fund costs and the pilot. We got one point, one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for gas meters and regulators. So with the developments that's occurring, we're having to purchase more gas meters and have those on stock. One of the other supplemental items that you will see that each, the water, the gas and the wastewater is paying a third, a third, a third, is for a traffic signboard with trailer. And so many times you'll drive down Highway six and you'll see Tech Stop's got that signboard up that says project started, whatever, and detour or traffic coming on, whatever it says. We are, we are in the process, that's what this item is. We're proposing to purchase one of those signboards that we can use for, for instance, we need to put one out at Fairway that, hey, Fairway's going to be closed for two days. Or, you know, Sigma Moore's closed because of the CIP project. Or, hey, slow down, Texas Birthday Bash is occurring. Our Texas Birthday Bash event is March first and second of twenty twenty-four. Whatever we want to put on those signs, that's what that signboard's used for. Around twelve thousand dollars is for gasoline. Capital lease purchases through enterprise is the twelve thousand. And then we got the capital, the around million dollars is what's left on the gas loop system out at, for Pecan Lakes. So then you get to the summary of the natural gas fund balance. And so we are seven days excess. So, you know, when you got ninety, so we're right at ninety-seven days excess of a hundred, around a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the gas fund. So even with the large increase, we're slowly, that fund balance is slowly increasing because last year it was around ninety-five thousand when we came to you. So it is going up a little. But again, that's why we each year will have to look at the rates and see what the rates are to make sure that the rates are corresponding with what we need our fund balance to come in out. Wastewater, which is our-
If I could interrupt you, you need a little break.
Thank you.
I failed earlier to call upon a guest that I had asked to be here tonight, Jody Cobbler from the Workforce Solutions to tell us about the GED and ESL programs. And so she's going to step up for just a moment, I'm so sorry that I- You need to take a breath anyway.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Jody Cobbler with the Brazos Valley Council of Governments. So we have a program that we have here in Navasota that Mr. Miller wanted me to come and talk to you about. And it's our GED and ESL program. So we have on Tuesday and Thursday nights from six to eight PM over at the community center, we have GED and English as a Second Language classes happening there in person. They actually have two classes going at the same time, that way the teachers are never alone and, you know, that sort of thing. But the other thing that we can provide as Workforce Solutions Brazos Valley to the city of Navasota and the employers in this area is services. If you have English language learning population that needs to learn specific English words for that occupation, we can come in and do that for the employer for no cost. So it's not just GED, it's not just ESL, but it's also training for occupational skills and language.
And I think they're also offering online-
Yes, they have virtual classes as well.
And I've got, I've got flyers on all the three, I've got, they're in Spanish and in English. And so they're available here if anybody would like to-
And we have yard signs up here, so if anybody wants to volunteer for a yard sign, let us know and you can put it, we'll put it in your yard.
Back to the budget. Wastewater, wastewater revenues, wastewater revenues. Again, the bond proceeds, we're not issuing bonds for next year. So that's why you see a negative number for the proceeds. And again, the amount for increase of six hundred and sixty-four is related directly with the increase in the rates. When we look at the expenditures, expenditures, there's not really much change in expenditures there. The, the amount for transfers increased and that was because we failed to, well, we didn't fail to. We, we proposed a budget last year to forego transferring wastewater funds over to pay for debt. And the reason was we had, our debt service fund had a pretty good, healthy fund balance and we pulled down on it. And that prevented us from pulling further down on our wastewater fund balance, which was already getting pretty low. We look at the major budget items, so of the two point six million dollars of expenses related to the wastewater fund, eighty-seven point three is on the, on the page there. Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand is for personnel, which represents around two hundred and ninety-four thousand for existing personnel. Salary adjustments at dollar per hour, around ninety-five hundred dollars. Certification pay around eleven thousand. And you remember, the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant, there's a lot more certifications. There's a lot more requirements for specific licenses to operate our wastewater treatment plant. So that's why you see a large amount for certification pay in there, promotions around five thousand. And this also has an addition of a new person, which is a water wastewater operator two. And the amount specifically related to the salary and benefits is the sixty-eight thousand seven fifty-four. Again, we got reimbursement of general fund amounts, we got the pilot, we got depreciation. So when we talk about the utility funds, which are all proprietary enterprise funds, you have to budget for depreciation. Now again, when we talk about fund balance, we add that back. But for budget purposes, we have to consider that and it's part of the expenses. Then we've got the maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, around a hundred and ten thousand. Capital lease purchases, again, those are related to our enterprise lease program as well as any other capital leases that we have out there. Electricity around a hundred thousand, motor vehicle gasoline, really don't have a lot of vehicles out there. And then our capital of wastewater treatment plant phase two, two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So again, on this page here represents eighty-seven point three percent of the expenses for the wastewater fund. And then we start looking at the summary and how many days fund balance. So we got excess of six hundred and thirty thousand, which represents around excess of a hundred and eight days. So again, doing a lot better than we were last year. And so again, next year we'll continue looking at the rates and determine what those rate increases need to be in order to maintain what we should in fund balance. We've got several other funds. And so earlier this year, we council approved toward the end of last year, November, December, the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone. So that was based on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one was the base value. And so last year or January first of this year or December thirty-first of last year, whichever way you want to look at it, it doesn't really matter. That, that assessed valuation, the difference between that created increment increases. And so with that, based on our tax rate, we're actually going to get fourteen thousand dollars for the first year in, in the, with the zone created. So we also have cemetery operating, which generates around eighty-two thousand dollars in revenue. The bulk of that expense is related to the roads and maintaining the roads out at the, in upgrading and doing any changes we need to, with the roadway out at cemetery. The Board of Fireman Services, it's a small amount that we, we get related to. And I had to ask the chief on this one, it's-
It's the retirement program.
Retirement program for volunteers. Yeah, so we, we put a little amount in there and so it earns a little bit of interest. Grants, so as I mentioned earlier, the comprehensive plan and our subdivision ordinance revision, we are in the process of working with our grant coordinator writing that grant in order to hopefully secure that grant for those two items. That's why it's in the grant fund, but that's what it represents. That is going to be our Development Services Director's twenty twenty-four project. That's what he's got to concentrate on once we get that grant awarded. Economic development, so economic development, we'll talk about later. Capital projects, again, we'll talk about a little bit later. Hotel motel funds and debt service and our, we have a small five oh one C three foundation of community projects. Small revenues coming in there and the bulk of those expenses going out related to our Blue Santa. And so we'll go a little bit further in detail of all these funds as we walk through them, but that's kind of an overview of where we are for other funds. And so now we want to talk about departments. So I'm going to, I'm going to go over some of the general government administration. And then after that, each director will come up and go through similar things. We'll talk about, here is categorized expenditures. If there's any staffing, what are their major budget items? And if they request a supplemental item and if there was, one of the supplemental items were funded, a little bit about that supplemental item and then just keep moving on. And that, that'll be the process through the most of the night until we get to, after the utility funds and I'll come back up here for the capital projects, our hotel motel and those type of funds. So right off the bat, we'll talk about non-departmental. So in non-departmental, this is a department that we program for placement of our debt payments that come from the general fund, so the one hundred and twenty-four thousand comes out of that. And then we also budget for personnel and that's related to anything related to salary increases such as the cost of living we've got in there, certification pay, any promotions or any of that. We put them in there. So once the termination has been made of where it's going to be distributed, it's distributed and then it shows up, you'll look there. We budgeted the one, one point one million, that was for the compensation plan for last year or for the current year. We, we budgeted that, but then when you look at end of year estimates, zero. The same thing will happen next year. So we'll have three hundred and forty-five that will show up here in budget, but end of year estimate will be zero. And, and the reason is because these amounts will be allocated to the specific department that actually gets those amounts. And we always make sure that the amounts they're getting is the amount that, that was budgeted. So we're talking, as I mentioned, talk about the major budget items. The twenty twenty certificates of obligation for the street and utility CIP project that's currently going on, we send over a hundred and twenty-four thousand four seventeen to help pay that debt. Supplemental requests, these are the supplemental requests that were included related to salary adjustments, the public works promotions for those employees that are specifically in the general fund, certification pay, and then we also had in there about the TMRS going from five percent to seven percent with twenty-year retirement. Of course, all the other ones are being proposed to be funded except for the TMRS portion. There was no way we could afford that. Administration, so administration, so administration includes myself, includes the city secretary, includes the executive administrative assistant for our department that we included this year. And so go on to major budget items. So within major budget items, staff development is around twelve point five thousand. And then memberships around thirty-eight hundred dollars. And as I mentioned earlier, the purchase of the three parcels of land for Union Pacific Railroad is also included. We put it in, in my budget, whether it could be in here or non-departmental, doesn't really, I mean, it's just where we put it. And so just want to make sure it gets accounted for. And so those, not sure if that or when that will happen. And so that'll be a future discussion that we'll have with council. But in the preparation for the budget, we needed to put it in there to consider it. And we talk about supplementals. So the Assistant City Manager, so the Assistant City Manager is, is, it's not a new position. This is, this is a position that has existed before in the budget. Last year, we removed the funding for it. And so I told council at that time, if I needed to see if there was a need for it to bring it back, that I would. And so there is, there is a need. There's several things that this position would be handling. It'd be assisting with the agendas, a lot of the reporting, working with, getting the strategic plan updated on a regular basis so you know what projects have been done. There's all, we've talked about the Excel spreadsheet that you, that used to be kept up. There's a lot of other reporting mechanisms that need to be done. There's help out with events as well as operations. And, you know, honestly, I've, I've had three, I've had three Assistant City Managers this year. So Lupe, Bobby and Reyna have done an excellent job. They've done it without pay, they've done it without balking about anything I've asked about it. But I cannot ask them to continue doing more work for the same pay and add on to their workload. And so these are things that have been asked of them. So, so for instance, the wayfinding, which Reyna and Bobby and Lupe have take, they took on and handled. Reyna taken the bulk of it. Those are things that an Assistant City Manager will be handling. In the past, the Assistant City Manager really didn't do Assistant City Manager task and duties. And so the idea is this position is not going to be another director and doing another director's job. It's actually going to be doing Assistant City Manager duties. And so that's why it's included in here. The other item, earlier I mentioned to you about, I came to you out in a work session about a survey. And it was about twenty thousand dollars for three years. And so our marketing communications director went to some training and came back with what a lot of the communicators are using out there, it's called Flash Vote Survey. Why is it eleven thousand eight hundred? Well, because the bulk of it, four thousand? Four thousand of it is to be able to do Spanish. So we can do surveys in different languages. And so that's a huge piece to add on to it and we can use it multiple times. So we can use it at different, different scenarios, whether we want to target a specific question out. How are you receiving communication of the city? And if that's the only question you want to ask it, you target it. And so there's, there's a lot of value in this one here and it doesn't cost twenty thousand dollars. And so that was a great tool. And again, it aligned with our strategic plan about trying to survey and get information. I'll go over the city council's budget with you, so, so you kind of know what's in your, what's in your budget there. So again, no staffing in there. And so I did have a question about what is city council doing for three hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars? Well, glad you asked. So here are the major budget items. So within your budget, we pay for the Grimes County Health. So Grimes County Health, originally, in the past, we've paid six thousand dollars to them. However, our Parks and Rec Department goes out and buys food for them for the Gold Key classes that they have and luncheons. And so we's like, hey, let's, let's just, whatever amount we've been doing that, let's just up the amount here and give it to them and allow them to go. Because it was taking a lot of staff time out, we were having to go into different locations to get the items that they specifically needed. And so really don't have the staff to do that anymore. So we've increased from six to seven, which is about net what we already do for them. Year three, on the scanning of the minute books, this is a project that the city secretary brought to you a couple of years ago and this is the last year for that. So, so Kerry costs us a lot of money, around a, around a hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred. So, but we do, we get great service from, from his law firm. He's got three lawyers and so we include all three lawyers on any emails. And it, one of them's going to reply. His company, as you know, specifies and specifically addresses municipal governments. And so they, they don't have to balance between doing probate and doing wills and other things. They are specialized in municipal government and doing a great service. But that's, that's also in your budget. Ordinance codifications, again, as you approve ordinances throughout the year, we have to codify those and that's around ninety-eight hundred dollars. Elections, so elections around seventy-five hundred dollars. And over the last couple of years, you've entered into two chap, two, two, chapter three eighty agreements. 380 agreements through local government code, chapter 380. You're allowed to provide incentives using general fund funds to incentivize or help on projects. And so you agreed to assist the developer for the Jack in the Box with the, the county road that's over there. And I think it was around $78,000. We've already paid, in a way it was written is it's based on the developments that come along. And so we've paid a portion of it and this is the remaining amount that is projected to be finished by hopefully next year. In addition to that, you've entered into a 380 agreement with P A Smith for the sidewalk improvements over at the, the parking lot that the P A Smith is in the process of developing. Those sidewalks, they developed based on our standards and our streetscape project and everything. And so estimated of around $100,000 for that. So that, that's in there. And then mentioned before that we weren't able to get to this year was the charter election. And so future council meetings will be coming to you to talk to you about looking at a charter election. Our, our charter has not been reviewed years, years. And so legally you're allowed every two years to do it for an update. We've not even done that. And so the idea is to put together a charter review committee, asking you to each individually provide us with a name and we'll walk through that process. But in order to have that charter election projecting around 26,500, again, that's for the election itself and that's also for legal counsel to review all the changes because legal counsel is going to have to put the wording, the ballot wording together because each item that's changed in there is a proposition on the ballot. And so whether that comes in more or less, we don't know. It was just the amount that we had, we came up with based on some projected cost.
Let me just to make a point on going back to the Jack in the Box.
Yes, sir.
Just duly noted, that was a county road.
Yes, sir. That is a county road that is within the city limits.
Okay.
In, in which the county decided not to participate. So we, we, we went with the developer and the developer was going to go a third. We proposed to the county to go a third and we would go a third. The county declined for that offer. And so we went back to the developer and said, county decided not to participate, we're only going to do a third too. And so the county, so the developer had to do two thirds and we've done a third. I will tell you, Jack in the Box was not number one, number two place that all of our T V B participants that, that came to T V B, after they left our event, they either went to the Dizzy Lama or they went to the Jack in the Box. And I think third was to the Whataburger at William Fitch. So Jack in the Box gets a lot of business and we projected that it would be repaid, our portion will be repaid over a five-year period when you take the amount of sales tax as well as property tax over the development. So we're definitely going to earn that back pretty soon because of the amount of growth we're seeing in that area.
And they're open 24 hours.
And they are open 24 hours. Municipal court, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on municipal court. The judge is here. If you have any questions about the municipal court, the, the judge's expenses mainly increased about $3,500 and it was related to predicting around 10 or more jury cases for next year. Okay. Do you want to go over human resources or you want Peggy?
Peggy's.
Peggy, you want to go over human resources?
Anything to say?
Judge, you got anything you want to say?
No.
You don't want to, you don't want to miss her?
Madam Miller, council members. Johnson Human Resource Director. And I will just go over our human resource. First of all, our expense expenditures, our proposed budget for the fiscal year 2023, 24, oops, I went too fast, I'm nervous. Personnel expense is 86,525. For materials and supplies, we have $3,120. Professional fees is 55,880. And our miscellaneous proposal is $22,743. On staffing, we have one human resource director. We did have at the beginning of the fiscal year last year, we had a human resource specialist that was repurposed to the, as a accounting technician in the financial services department. Physically, 2004 major budget items, time clock plus software is estimated at $5,300 and that's for keeping our time in attendance for our employees. Third-party benefit consultant is Hub International. They recently will be replacing, they have replaced Branson Benefits. And they budget at the same amount that Branson Benefits was budgeted and it's at $30,500. Employee service awards is $1,690. And that consists of service awards and years of service awards to our employees. On service awards, that's just awards for like quarterly, monthly employee of the quarter and, and et cetera. Oops, sorry. Employee appreciation events is 15,000 and that is for four staff meetings, public service week, employee and family gatherings twice a year. New employee jackets, we budget $2,000 for that and that's for all the new employees that came on board, starting in November of 2022 up until we audit jackets in November of 2024, 24, 23, I'm sorry. Drug testing is estimated at $2,500. And now we have a new part in our budget, which is the help wanted advertisement and it's estimated at $6,307. Christmas dinner and employee award ceremony, that includes the rental, the rental, the catering, decorations and gifts, paper goods, gift cards for drawing and also for the DJ. And that's all we have for the human resource department to present to you for, for the budget for this new year.
Thank you.
Jason, sorry, when is a good time to ask questions? Is this, is this the time to ask?
This is the time to ask questions if you got, you got them.
Okay. I do have a question. The time clock plus software, is that the same software that we've been with? Is this an upgrade or is this a new system or what is that?
So that is, that is the, the current system that we have. We, Public Works did have some issues and so we went to punch clocks for that. And so they actually punched the clocks, which has been a lot easier for them to have, not have to figure out the time. And then Public Works Admin has been getting those times and entering them into the system. The good thing about N-code, that new N-code that we're proposing in code 10, they have a whole, whole different, their own timekeeping system. And so hopefully that'll make it a lot easier.
And the help wanted advertising, that's about the same that we've spent before?
Yes, sir. So what, what happens is that was coming out of city council's, city council's budget. And so when I was going through the budget, I'm like, no, city council doesn't, I mean, city council for advertising needs to be for things that city council normally would do for, say, the Rattlers, something for where you want to, the Rattler magazine or something like that or whatever it is. But help wanted needs, anything advertising needs to come out of whatever department it, it's handling. And so went back and looked and see how much it's costing us to do help wanted with Examiner and other locations. And also, also this includes any location we've had to do for any, when we hired the police chief, we went out and had to, with some other, more than just the local area. So that's what includes there.
A little hopped up on the Red Bull. Okay, so I'm just going to be going through financial services budget briefly and just kind of highlighting the significant changes. So for FY '24, you see that the budget increased by about 48,000. And the reason for that is my predecessor was a different classification. So with me coming on and then bringing over a, a human resources technician over to financial services, she got reclassified as an accounting technician and we're hoping that you'll approve the budget for her to be reclassified as a financial analyst. Materials and supplies, our materials and supplies, we're hoping will decrease for next year and that just includes office supplies that we might need throughout the year. For maintenance and services, that is our credit card processing fees and the monthly charges that we pay to ad con systems for the kiosk that's out in the lobby. And professional services or professional fees. So that's made up of several different things. That's our payments to debt book and they organize our debt lease and subscription agreements. Their team reviews all of our contracts and agreements and then they input all that information for us into the system and it summarizes it, not just for us, but also for our auditors. So if you recall from when Ben Cohen came and presented our FY '22 report, he said, you know, that was primarily the big delay in things was the implementation of GASB 86? Was it, no, 87, sorry, GASB 97. And so what we have to look forward to for the end, or for FY '23, which will be presented on next year will be GASB 96. The cost of that is 97.50 a year. For FY '23 that we're wrapping up, the cost to implement that was 11,750. Another component of our professional fees is the payments that we make to HDL companies and they provide us with sales tax data. It's heavily used by our economic development director, just so she can see where the numbers are with companies in the area. This also include, professional fees also includes payments to independent contractors used for various projects throughout the year. Included in there as well is the payments that we would be making to the new audit firm that we select once we go out for bid. The rates have increased since, since the last time we went out for bid. So we've, we've accounted for that, for that increase with that line item. And lastly, on professional fees, payments that we make to Grimes County Appraisal District for appraisal and collection services. So those rates did increase from last year to this year, or sorry, they will be increasing for FY '24. And under miscellaneous, it's travel training and we brought over the advertising costs that was, I think it was in city council, right Jason? Advertising for RFPs and RFQs related to our grants. As I mentioned, there was some reclassification and we did bring in somebody from the HR department into financial services. So basically we went up by one person in our department. And as I mentioned, so these right here are the major budget items. So with the biggest of them being our payments to Grimes County for appraisal and tax collection services and our credit card processing fees and the kiosk and what we will be paying to the new audit firm. Any questions?
What, what percentage do we pay on that credit card processing?
So typically there's, it's about three to 4% that gets paid.
Depend on the service?
Uh, so there's.
American Express charge more or something?
There's different factors. It depends on like the amount of the transaction, it depends on, what's it called?
There's a specific fee. Discover, Discover has an additional fee as opposed to your MasterCard and Visa. And American Express has a higher number, it just varies depending on what the card.
Yeah, in, in the past, I think, before we were required to have PCI compliance, you know, but you could take cards over the phone or, you know, with the person not present there. And there was an additional fee for the cardholder not being present.
How often does that get reevaluated?
We just redid it, I think a couple of months ago, shortly after I arrived, our Development Services Director and our IT person put together that, our policy.
You got another question?
I'll let you though. I just asked, I need to fast forward to the fire department real quick, so.
You have to move that.
Oh, you're here? Okay.
I'll, I'll just leave it.
Okay.
You can see all the, pretty much all the numbers go up. Personnel services, we are fully staffed now except for one dispatch opening we currently have and actually have Wednesday hiring a, another investigator fill in a spot. Materials and supplies, a lot, everything is going up on our supplies, ammunition, cost, cost of all the stuff, bulletproof vests and so forth. Significantly, we try to find grants for whatever we can. And also that covers our body cameras and so forth. Maintenance and service fees, everything we have has to have an annual license. Our radios, portable radios, the mobile radios, the body cameras, every single thing has a licensing that we have to pay for annually to each company to keep, maintain that and keep it going. Professional fees, that is going to be more in internal, our fees in our office fees, we keep that as minimal as possible. Miscellaneous, that's pretty much anything that we run through, through the PD side, real small, this is not animal control either, this is miscellaneous stuff, but our capital outlays are bigger stuff. We did get our radios last year and that is on that seven-year contract. We are asking for the dispatch consoles, that's a five-year contract. Being that we have the radios and everything with Motorola, the last step was a tower. Thomas from BB Axe was able to get a grant, was almost $2 million. Over a million for a new tower. We have to pay the lease fee for the land and it's right off of County Road 220. Also outfitting of patrol cars, every time we outfit patrol cars, roughly $35,000 for the cage, the lights. Every, every two years, you know, any, any type of vehicle changes the body style, just one tweak, that cage doesn't fit to the next body style, two years difference. And now we are going to the Tahos, which these are, we've been dealing with the Fords every two years, the, the cage from this 2021 going to 2022 or in 18, it's, it's crazy. So the tiles, maybe that'll help a little bit, but we also decreased a little bit on the tiles when we did the overhead lights and so forth like that on the outfitting. Outfitting an officer, we hire an officer, it's roughly $15,000 because of the body camera, the bulletproof vest are running about $1,500 apiece, the uniform, we pretty much outfit everybody. The uniform, we pretty much outfit everybody. When we first did this, we used drug seizure funds. And we pass along a lot of that down to officers, but when we do, now that we get extra positions, we have to buy new. Top one, we still, Chief of Police, the Assistant Chief of Police was added this year, which we changed the, the title from Lieutenant to Assistant Patrol Sergeant, asking for two. Patrol Sergeant is in the Patrol Division overseeing the patrol officers. The officers wear a uniform, they go to all the calls every day. Generally, other agencies have a Patrol Sergeant that oversees roughly six officers. Ours currently over, he oversees thirteen. He's overworked, and so asking for a Patrol Sergeant. We won't have it for each shift, which, looking at different agencies, they have one officer maybe over morning shift and one overnight. With the proposal, one will be over the shift on opposite shift. So Monday, Tuesday, they work their twelve-hour shifts. That officer would flex between both shifts, so they cover the morning shift and the evening shift. But they each have their side, so now they're, would maximum, um, would be over about eight officers each.
Is that sergeant position, are they still mostly responsible for paperwork as the officer does the report and then goes and gets reviewed by the sergeant?
So the Patrol Sergeant, yes, goes over the paperwork. Officers type, everything they do is typed, that's what you don't see on TV, on the movies. Everything we do has to have typed, and then that gets forward to the Patrol Sergeant. Reviewed, approved, or kicked back. And then reviews video footages, make sure any type of complaint. Vehicle inventory, inventory, the officer's checking everything. They do pretty much all the checks and balances inside Patrol Division. And then that point, the Sergeant pushes it over to records, which then goes to DA's office or whatever court needs to go to. So their responsibility, besides dealing with the judge too, citations and so forth like that. Make sure the officers are going to court, passing out all that information. And setting up their trainings that they're required to have every two years. So all we're doing is adding one, taking a little bit of pressure, or a lot of pressure off the one Sergeant we currently have. And, and putting two in there. We did have a sergeant spot prior to, about three, four years ago, we did have two Patrol Sergeants. And then it went down to one. And then with that other sergeant's position was pushed away, which we hired the Investigator Sergeant CID, which showed up a minute ago. He is running the CID Division very good now. As that end, we are having some transitions there with, uh, we have one investigator resign on Friday today. He turned in everything. He didn't leave on bad terms, he left for family reasons. And so, but we are hiring somebody, I'm getting their last notice signature on Wednesday this week. He's a former Navistod Officer coming back, if he signs. So that CID Sergeant has taken our case flow down from a hundred cases. We currently are holding forty-two cases open in CID right now. We have four spots of investig, four investigator positions with one Sergeant overseeing that division. So on that next line, you see the Narcotics Investigator. We're asking for a promotion on that, it's, we're gonna promote within to promote up into Narcotics Investigator. We haven't had that position in several years when I finally had to give up that. But Narcotics Investigator is more of a proactive investigator, gets out and finds cases. Narcotics are related, the key to pretty much all crime. Thefts, robberies, murders, aggravated assaults. So you get a proactive investigator in there, and it goes to go out, find where the problem is coming in from, being sold to and so forth, shut that down. Also Narcotics Investigator develops a big list of confidential informants, CIs, that are gonna help. They also get out in the streets a lot more in plain clothes, get a lot more information on the streets, which helps out the CID Division. And in Narcotics, this, this officer will be assigned to go after the gang shootings. Any of the major crimes like that. When I was working it many years ago, I went out to all the shooting calls and anything, major robberies and so forth. Because a lot of my intel from Narcotics helped out the CID Division. That will be a promotion within for the Narcotics Investigator spot. I think the additional ask was for a vehicle for that position.
Let me ask you this. So it seems like a lot of money to hire somebody to fill that position. And so I was just curious why it couldn't just be a regular investigator that was potentially more apt to wanting to get out and do something like that versus being a supervisor position? But, but I'm not hung up on that. The question that I have is, if we have a Narcotics Investigator, does that give us any better chance for grants or anything like that?
Well, on the pay thing, it's the same pay as an investigator.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said it was-
That's an Investigator Sergeant, that's what we added, uh, the last year, we created that spot last year. Narcotics Investigator is on the same pay as a regular investigator. So in Narcotics, just speaking of the past and so forth, after several years I was in it, I was, uh, accepted into the OSDEF Task Force, ATFDA Task Force. That does get you the higher, upper level narcotics trafficking, which then can help out with seizures and so forth, that benefits the department. All of our rifles and pistols that all the officers have were from narcotic seizures when I worked it.
So Councilmember, if you'll look on the police officers line, so we're going from thirteen to twelve, and that's because he's moving one of his police officers promoting, that's one of the promotions.
The addition would be a-
So the addition is, so there's not much, there's not a huge spread of going from a police officer to investigator.
Yeah, and my hangup was just with the word narcotics versus just investigator. And, and what does that do for us? And aside agency that we are, I don't know that Narcotics Investigation are-
I was there for, I mean, I did it for ten years here in Narcotics Investigator. And the DA actually, when she heard about this, wanted to write a letter about how useful it was back then and beneficial it is. So that's just her short letter of that. She couldn't be here to talk about it, but it's just a proactive unit.
So our DA has, during the chief interviews, one of the things that, so if you were in one of the committees, Mr. Harris, I don't know if you were in the committee or not, but one of the comments that came was we've gotta address the narcotics. Cause nearly every arrest, any contacts we're having, there's drugs related. And so the DA has highly supports, whether we go with a Narcotics Investigator, a K-9 unit, anything that can help with narcotics to help bring that down is, is very supportive through her office.
I'm not against it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that, so as to why it's narcotics, and that's the reason, is there, there is a need for it in, in the community.
So they're in the CID Division, and with that is, we were still on call and help out the other investigators. And it just, narcotics should get to vary your times, cause, you know, drug dealers, drug users watching and all that.
I think when you did it, you were probably still the chief. Is what it seemed like to me.
The only other change I see on there is the, and y'all know this already, is the School Resource Officer, where we added the additional full-time with how, how the salary was seventy-five, twenty-five, basically roughly something like that, seventy-thirty. And that's the, pretty much the only addition on that one.
So you will be actually taking one police officer off the street?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, is that good with the rooftops that we have?
On, on, right now, on the numbers, we have thirteen. We would go to twelve. And we still have two corporals, and then we have two sergeants. So technically, we have sixteen on the streets. And we chop that up as, as our bulk patrol taking calls. And then the corporals and sergeants are, are on a, like a split shift where they can overlap during the high peak times. The sergeants I wanna put during the daytime where they have more direct contact with records division, the judges, the district attorneys, they can see both shifts and fix paperwork, the judge and so forth like that. Where the corporals will help out more in the hot shifts. We, in the past, have been running about two officers per shift. And then we started in the past year, swing shifts, which it looks like we are running a, a lot more cops out there. But they're just here when everybody's pretty much awake in this. Everybody goes to sleep, they slowly drop off, and it goes back down to the two. So we're just playing with numbers and hours on showing our force out there. But that's how we're playing with, um, these, now it would be, we actually will have more officers on the streets.
And plus you hadn't been fully staffed in quite a long time.
I don't know when the last time, I can't even tell you, a year that we worked, which, knock on wood. Uh, we currently have an opening in Dispatch, but we have several applications right now.
On the K-9 unit, will that mean that you'll be getting a dog also?
That did not, but I think it's the next slide, it did, we did make the budget.
Okay.
But that, but it did include a dog.
An unfunded-
Is an unfunded item that, that did include a dog.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, our major budget items, Treats on the Streets, and that's why I don't know how big Treats on the Streets is. Blue Santa, that one's also a very large one, and all that money is from donors and sponsors. Our server, everything that we have is uploaded, body camera, in-car camera, everything gets uploaded. We gotta have somewhere to put it, and that's why we have MI. Uh, we are, we did, and from Narcotics, uh, these vehicles were probably one of my last big ones, where we seized five vehicles, we're selling those. Uh, it does take a long process for the seizure side of it, so these cars, pretty much antiques now. But we're gonna sell those off in, for UTV, which will help out search and rescue. The fire department has one, we have told them several times out, and so we can use ours as well. Vest, uh, vests are only good for five years. We do have a vest grant that helps us out, pays for fifty percent of it. But they're roughly twelve to fifteen hundred dollars just for our basic vest that we wear on the uniform. I already said the patrol vehicles, that's our average cost to outfit a marked patrol unit. CID units, just plain lights and siren and the radio, it's roughly fifteen thousand. The clothing uniform, nineteen-five, that includes the radio, the body camera and so forth, that's why it's high. And that radio tower lease, it's starting this year. Our air currently, they have the structure out there. If you drive down Courtney Road, look to the right, the real tall two-hundred-and-twenty-foot tower. There's a structure out there right now, they're putting everything in. We got an updated email today where our equipment's coming in for it. So that'll be really nice there, we should not have, I don't know if we have bad radio reception. We don't know other reason why, we're gonna have bad radio reception after this. It'll actually help penetrate through the building walls and so forth. But our rate, we're currently using Milliken Radio, or we'll jump off an Anderson Tower, or all the way into Washington County Tower, those are the towers we're using right now. That's our second year, the next one is the second year payment on our Motorola radios, which be updated from fifteen-year-old radios that were outdated to our newer ones. Nine-one-one services, we have to pay that annually, you have nine-one-one here to run, operate all that. Rifle racks that we were putting in for last year, it's just a delay on everything. And so we're gonna put the rest of them in there, um, this following year.
That was a city phone, not mine.
I didn't wanna put it into some of the patrol cars if we may have been replacing them, cause that may or may not fit in the next ones. So these were the requests, and basically the funding part of it, the leased vehicle for CID. Being that the shifts occurred in the department, when I moved up to Lieutenant and then moved up to the Chief, I just kept the vehicle, I didn't, we didn't do a replacement. And covering all those spots, so we never replaced that open spot from there. And then Assistant Chief Shoemaker moved up, and we did not replace his vehicle or that spot either. Which we are now, we are, come Wednesday, we have filled up all of our spots. So that CID vehicle is gonna be for that investigator that we didn't have a car, cause we never replaced it. Promoting the patrol officer narcotics, that's the cost right there. And it's gonna be including the vehicle. A minor outfitting of a vehicle, it's not gonna be used for pursuits or anything like that and, and taking anybody to jail. Patrol Sergeant, that covers everything. Basically, we hired somebody to promote within, then we're replacing that one spot. So we will push somebody up, we'll replace that one. And then replacing the one patrol car with a traffic unit vehicle. And we'll skip real quick to the School Resource Officer, y'all have already heard about that one. So going back to the traffic unit and then going back to how many people we have on the streets. Putting that Patrol Sergeant up there, if we promote within, then we're hiring somebody else, putting him right back there in that, in the Patrol Division. So we're still right around that twelve number. We can start a traffic unit with two. And the traffic unit, you know how many complaints and so forth we get from eighteen-millars downtown? And speeders, and now there's everything else going on. So the traffic is focused strictly on traffic enforcement of city ordinances and handling car crashes, DWI's, the reckless driver calls and everything like that. Which will take a lot of pressure off the patrol officers that are taking citizen calls. Just today, right at school release, we had two car crashes on the west side of town, a major and then a minor. And we pretty much all pulled away to go help that, which the traffic unit will focus on handling that, where the guys can handle their calls, which we're dealing with the first day of school traffic right now. And if you have a complaint in the subdivision, that's the traffic unit to focus on that. So we're not pulling the guys away from their normal patrolling to just sit there and wait for somebody to speed and, and run a stop sign in a certain subdivision. And that's what that vehicle, we haven't done this before, we talked about for years, so we're gonna go ahead and pull the trigger and, and start it up. Since we have the resources and we have a fully staffed department right now. Any questions on the police side? Animal control, this one's pretty easy. So I have two animal control officers, animal service, services. We did a big remodel recently. Y'all haven't seen it, uh, everything inside, that's an old building, so everything was pretty much revamped, redone. Yes, the vet bills are going up, uh, we, we still have, we, we're not a kill shelter, so we're still maintaining a lot of animals. A lot of shots, a lot of vaccinations, a lot of food, a lot of water, a lot of electricity and so forth. I did spend some money just recently, that metal building, and the heat right now is pretty much with AC running full blast, ninety degrees inside. So the officers have been going down there working and coming here. So we spent about two grand on putting in a window unit in there and helping out. We have a siding repair installation. But being that we just had the remodel and the added AC, it clearly wasn't needed right now because the, the program that we're working with, it came in and just totally redid our shelter. That's a lot of our stuff, is the spay, neuter, rabies, microchipping, thirty-six hundred dollars. And then the vet bills, that is pretty much where a lot of our money goes to. Vet prices go up, I understand, and so we had to go up a little bit on ours, keep up with it. We're trying to adopt dogs, I think during that event, they adopted seven dollars. So that was real good. But as fast as they go out, coming in faster. Any questions?
Let's see if I can figure out how to operate this machine.
Button without, button without the-
That one, there we go, look at that. Firemen can figure it out. All right, so we're looking at the, kind of the summary of our budget here. Uh, I can say, look, mine went down by about four hundred thousand. It's a little low. Reason for that is the payment of the truck, since we received it, we had to make the full payment to Metro Fire for the new fire trucks. The, we have a little bit of an increase in the Personnel Services. If you look down below that, we're, we're increasing our full-time firefighter staff by two. If you remember last year, we got, we, y'all approved one, so this will put three new, uh, there'll be three full-time firefighters per shift plus one part-timer. So our plan is to have four on per day. With a minimum staffing of three, because our part-timers sometimes get called away for their full-time jobs. So this gives us a little more stability in that, in our staffing. You're gonna see a little, see an increase there in our maintenance and services. And a lot of that has to do with, we do have an aging fleet. Even though we have the new truck, we still have other apparatus that are still old and aging. We wanna do some rehab work on the, on Engine eighty-five that, that new engine is kind of replacing. It's still a truck that'll be in service. We are selling one of our small engines that's from two thousand and one. But Engine eighty-five has had a lot of in, motor problems over the last year, turbos and things like that. And we're still experiencing some of those issues, and we need to get some of that up and going so this truck can continue to operate and function for us for another ten years, hopefully. Just like Chief Miles was talking about, we have another year payment, second year payment on Motorola radios. We replaced all of our radios last year. We replaced all of our radios last year, uh, so this is the second year with those, they, um, so this is a five-year contract, I think, or a seven-year. As I mentioned while ago, some maintenance and rehabilitation of Engine eighty-five. Annual apparatus and equipment, uh, testing, we have to have our ladders, hoses, things to that nature, has to be, has to be tested and certified every year. Uh, air packs, those things. We always have a five-year rotation of gear, every year we try to replace five sets of gear, and that cost continues to climb for us, like most everything else. So, uh, we're, they, actually, our gear has an expiration date on it, after ten years, no matter what condition it is, it's in. Ten years from manufacture, we have to, we have to discard the gear. The radios and communications, that's batteries, some fees for some, uh, for active nine-one-one, we have, uh, uh, we replace pagers, our volunteers still continue to use pagers. Medical evaluations that we do for all of our, uh, staff, that they go, go through, they have a medical and a physical evaluation. Matter of fact, that's happening this week on Thursday. Volunteer accident policy that we maintain, and we have to replace all of our SCBA air pack cylinders. Uh, they are expiring this year after fifteen years, so we have to replace those. Some of our supplementals, uh, as I mentioned, we are adding two more firefighters, uh, doing some, um, we're adding cancer screenings for all of our firefighters, uh, and it's in a, depending on, it, it goes by ages, so not everybody gets it immediately, so it depends on your age, and that's the recommendation, uh, on those. And again, doing some rehabilitation to Engine eighty-five. These are the things that did not make. Any questions?
Nope, emergency.
Oh, man, emergency. Okay, so we don't have any staff in this one, uh, basically, emergency management, we maintain a little bit of, um, maintain a little bit of funding in there for incidences, if we have to open up the EOC, give us a little start and bump. One of the biggest things that's in there is the annual fee to maintain the, uh, weather bug, for everybody to look up and see what our weather is like. So it, the AVOS is, uh, we have that online now, but it doesn't necessarily replace what weather bug can do. And then it also gives us the camera in the site of the city hall, uh, that Channel eleven news, uh, accesses and uses. And so in the mornings, you can all, you can see when they do weather, a lot of times it'll show the city hall, city hall at five or six o'clock in the morning. And that's it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, um, Raina Tashara, Economic Development. So here's just a breakdown of the Economic Development Department, um, nothing too major changing this year, but I'll go a little bit more in depth. Okay, what's going on? Okay, there we go. Um, so the major budget items coming up for this fiscal year are a continuation from last year, so including staff training and development, uh, memberships including Texas Economic Development Council, Texas City Management Association and Texas Downtown Association, and then, um, the award application fees for, um, some of those awards that we apply for each year, including International Economic Development Council and Texas Downtown Association. And then, um, the supplemental requests that were put in this year but not funded include a downtown parking analysis, um, assessment, additional leadership training and the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers, TAMEO Conference. Uh, but the team decided that at this time, a professional downtown parking analysis wasn't really needed at this point, um, with our growth, and then also with scheduling conflicts with the next fiscal year, um, the ED department wouldn't even be able to attend those additional trainings, so, um, those requests were not funded. Do y'all have any questions on the economic development? Alright, and now Parks and Rec.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Ryan Hendricks, Parks and Rec Manager, um, forgive me, this is my first time doing budget stuff, so. Uh, as you can see, this is this year's budget, um, I'm fairly new to the position. Uh, don't expect it to go up too much next year that y'all haven't already planned for. Um, at the bottom, you are staffing me and three part-timers for the Navasota Center building attendant. Right now, we have two that are employed, we are in search for another at the moment. The one without there. One more time?
Yeah, uh, got it, okay.
So, um, the major budget items that Parks and Rec has this year are moves in the park, um, the fishing frenzy program. In the past, we've done Kid Fish program, um, instead of outreaching towards another program, we're gonna bring it in-house and hopefully get three events out of it, instead of just the one, I'm gunning for two, we're gonna hope for three. Um, special programming, that is the amount of money to run all the extra classes that I hope to bring here. Um, the daddy-daughter dance at an event, mommy and me, of course, all those movies, art classes, cooking, cook-offs, et cetera. And then, of course, funding Pretty City Committee projects. And then supplemental request, um, I requested going to three different conferences, the National Recreation Parks Association. Um, they're holding a conference here in Dallas, Texas, um, I thought that'd be great to go and attend this year, since normally they travel across the US. Of course, Traps, that's the Texas Association for Parks and Rec, um, there are conferences in Houston, I believe, and then the Texas Public Pool Council, as you heard earlier, with, uh, the community loving the pool. It'd be nice to build those connections to, um, hopefully improve the pool in other ways. As far as park improvements goes, to align with our strategic plan, um, we were approached about a donation for a pavilion, hopefully at Hillside Park. The placement is contingent on the school district at the moment, they're wanting to do something with a piece of land that they have. If all else fails, they are going to work with us about possibly putting the pavilion there. And to go with our fishing frenzy, um, campaign, I suppose, we would like to add up here at Pat Out Pond to provide the community with more fishing locations, more spots on that particular pond, since that's our premier fishing location in the city. Um, and then hopefully in the future, we can get a bridge and maybe get a walking trail around it, but that's, that's years down the road.
And so you're counseling, um, these park items that he just mentioned, those park improvements, we're gonna discuss that toward the end when we talk about capital projects just in general.
Yeah, there's a lot of money. Um, any question about parks? Moving on to the pool, um, pool is a success this year, I, I believe, um. We had nine staff total, ideally, I'd like more than that, so we budgeted for fifteen lifeguards, a pool manager and two headguards. We'll see, it, everybody across this area of Texas is having lifeguard, I think it's just the nationwide shortage of lifeguards. I know College Stationer Brian had, um, their gold club members certified and put up in the stands, and I don't know if I'm ready for that yet. But if it comes down to it, I mean, anything to keep the pool open, right? So the big things on the pool budget are, of course, maintenance, the chemicals, it's always an expense, those rates fluctuate all the time, and then our pool vacuum, our cleaning, pool vacuum and cleaning. So supplemental request, like Mr. Reese just said, um, we'll talk about later about it being a debt, but we know that that pool is old. The last records that I have on that pool being renovated were in two thousand and eight. The plaster has a lifespan of seven to ten years, so we're a little bit older than that. Um, the decking is falling apart, causing a safety risk for patrons walking barefoot, which is almost a hundred percent of them at the pool. And, um, the fence is rotted or rusted out in some areas, um, ruining the integrity. As well as in the locker room, the walls are starting to collapse, which, I mean, I don't want them to collapse ever with people in there. So it's something that I'd like to address sooner than later, and again, these will be discussed later in the, with that talks. Any questions about pool? Great, thanks guys.
Y'all still awake?
What?
Gotcha. Um, I'm here to talk about marketing and comms, so, um, I'm just gonna, the key highlights here, I mean, like everything across the board, things going up, things arising, things cost money. Um, so we're seeing a slight increase across the board on everything, but the big point here is that we have a, a new staff member that we have requested to assist in the marketing communications department, um, and this, uh, person will ultimately assist with, um, advertising, helping with social media management, helping, um, IT function, this show for council meetings, um, just anything in general for the department. So, um, you know, as we've discussed, staff burnout, this is key to keep moving the department forward, so. The budget highlights promotional materials and swag, like we do every year, they've increased, costs increased, um, I think that went up about five thousand. Um, our revised websites, that is plural, so for tourism, the city website, the EDC website, we also pay for out of the marketing com budget. And these are the add-ons, excuse me, the add-ons as well, so forms, um, that's added into this cost, um, and the other cool utensils that we have that go along with the site. Um, publications, just in general, not just in the examiner, we do advertising, you know, across the board in our local media outlets. Um, you know, that's a big chunk of the money we spend, um, staff to melon and events, um, important to continue to keep up to date with trends, how we can help pushing forward for the city, um, advertising and brochure stands, so, um, we do, do still have print, um, materials that go out and distribute around Texas, so, uh, this is a major item that we do to help promote Navasota. Supplemental request, as I discussed, is the major function is for the new employee, employee, and this cost here includes benefits and equipment, and it is, uh, the, I guess, the middle-range, uh, fund to try and bring them on board. So, um, yeah. Any questions on?
What does, what does equipment mean for this position?
So, computers, uh, laptop, phone, um, also, you know, if we wanna buy a camera or a video, like, you know, kind of those kinds of utensils to help, you know, move a new direction for the marketing com department.
I do have a question, um, I should've been asking everybody this question that wanted new employees. Uh, what about the space, I mean, are y'all gonna be sharing offices?
Um, so, we are in the process of, uh, one, cleaning up storage rooms that we have. Um, there's an auditor room that we're trying to make space with right now, um, that we can put, you know, new employees there. Um, there's some shuffling around, we do have one spare office available upstairs already, uh, which we, you know, we have open. Um, so, you know, there's, there's some room where we can put some of these people that we're requesting.
We're getting close with max out, but we are, uh, utilizing the, the best space we can, um, and trying to, um, go through a lot of old stuff, old records. Clearly, the, the, the finance closet, is what we call it, uh, probably hasn't been purged since this building was built. Um, and so they, uh, they worked this last Thursday and Friday on it and plan on doing it again, uh, to be able to, to, uh, get that narrowed down. And so, uh, on top of that, uh, the events closet, which, um, marketing communications has a, a closet too. So we're trying to do as much as we can to squeeze as much room, we are getting close, um, but we'll come to you when we have issues. But right now, uh, in this budget, we, we do not plan any issues.
Any, any other questions? So we're moving along to the tourism budget now, um, as I've said before, you know, things keep rising, costs keep rising. Um, the cost of entertainment is going up significantly across all aspects of every single event, not just Texas Birthday Bash. Um, so that is taken into account, um, you know, when it comes to the budgeting process here and what we're requesting and propose financial year. So some of the, the key budget highlights are, of course, Texas Birthday Bash, it's gonna increase the entertainment cost for that. Last year, we spent, I mean, sorry, I say last year when it was just this year, twenty twenty-three, um, we spent around a hundred and sixty thousand on entertainment, and so we're proposing for it to go up to two hundred and twenty thousand, which would increase the budget to around four hundred and nineteen thousand overall for the Texas Birthday Bash event. Um, treats on the streets, um, you know, we help out with advertising for the PD on that, same with National Night Out, uh, the MLK Parade, uh, we, it's not the city event, but we help, um, fund that through advertising, um, and any needs that they, they have to help, you know, do road closures and things like that, um, same with the Easter egg hunt, it's not a city-run event, but we partner with the organization that runs that event and help them with their advertising and needs for that event. Sounds of Summer, um, that's just overall cost for entertainment, kids activities, um, and all the aspects that go into that, that's another major budget item. Um, Freedom Festival, same thing there, entertainment costs go up, fireworks, um, that's a big chunk of the money. Uh, this year, we spent around fifteen thousand dollars on that fireworks show. Uh, we did seek a new vendor for the, the fireworks show that we did this year, so we're hoping to use that same vendor, uh, next year. Um, you know, since they did do such a great job, um, and hoping that that cost remains the same, but, you know, we can only be hopeful. Um, Home for the Holidays event, now, just pointing out a fact here that the reason why that number is high is that in the tourism budget, we also pay for all the lights in the city, um, with that funding. So, um, I wasn't sure if we're actually moving that into facilities and maintenance or not, but, but part of that cost is the decorations in all of town, including city hall, um, you know, and including the nice tree that we have out front as well. So, um, that's a highlight there, uh, publications for tourism, so, um, you know, that goes for any promotional, um, ads in, um, you know, magazines, newspapers, um, same, you know, that, that kind of stuff. And then advertising, that takes into account, um, ads we do on TV with KBTX, for example, we run a campaign with them. Um, and like Facebook targeted ads, there's like, you know, a whole host of lists that, that we do specifically targeting for tourism and visit Navasota to help promote just Navasota in general and of course downtown, to help drive some more, you know, economic development.
A question.
Yes.
On the Birthday Bash, uh, is, is, is that a profitable e- event or not?
So, you might, so let me, I want, make sure, I wanna make sure council understands everything related to Texas Birthday Bash. There has been notion that our hotel motel funds, our hot funds, pays a hundred percent for Texas Birthday Bash, that is false. So hotel motel funds can only pay, uh, for certain things, and when we get to the hotel motel fund, we'll actually go in-depth of what they can do. Uh, but only a small portion could be used for that related to advertising. So the, the, the resources to pay for Texas Birthday Bash come from ticket sales, which we're showing up here, proposing for increases for tickets. We get some small amount for sponsorships, very small amount, we charge for vendors to be able to come here. Uh, and the rest, uh, comes from our other general fund revenues. So, uh, just from the, the bucket of money, we pay for all the other service, police fire, development services, parks and all that, helps fund this, uh, this event. Uh, but it, it is not in the black, uh, I don't think it's ever been in the black, it, um, we tried to get as, last year, we got as close as we could, um, which I think was around still a hundred.
Yeah, we, um, this year was the most profitable we've ever been in Texas Birthday Bash, and we made about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in revenue. But we still won't meeting.
But we spent over three hundred thousand. So the question is, it's, it is not profitable, it is, it doesn't earn, and again, that's why it's in the general fund, it's not its own fund, as we talked about, for where a hundred percent pays for the use. But I wanna make sure council understands, hotel motel funds does not pay for this event, nor does it pay for fireworks. It pays for other things that we'll talk about later. Yes, sir.
A, a lot of these projects, particularly in this, this area, uh... A, a lot of these projects, particularly in this, this area, uh, are, they have donations as supporting them. And I, I'm wondering where that comes into the revenue stream? Is that unreported income or something and it just gets?
So, no, sir. It, it shows up in our revenues, um, under, uh, sponsorships. Uh, it, it shows up under miscellaneous, is where the miscellaneous is. But, uh, sponsorships, amounts we get from vendors, um, and amounts we get from any donations from, from that. But, again, it does not offset the cost, the, the cost a hundred percent.
We, we made around thirty-nine thousand dollars in sponsorships for Texas Birthday Bash for 2023. If that puts something in to food or thought.
When you say made, I guess it's not made, you just received?
We received.
I mean, yeah, so, I, I'll actively go out and talk to, to businesses and local business owners and, and, you know, tell them about our event and how it could be beneficial for their business to be represented at our event. Um, and essentially, that's how a sponsorship is made, and there's a lot of trading that goes on. So, um, you know, instead of just monetary costs, they may, um, donate services. You know, for example, Mike Hopkins may offset some of the costs for alcohol for their sponsorship name to be up at the event.
Do you have a, uh, like a breakdown of, of the citizens of Navasota? Does they attend this event real good, or is it just outside people coming in?
So, um...
So, we really don't track that, um...
Do we pull cell phone data from the last event?
So, we did.
Did we get a report on that? Did I get a report on that? But, we got to see where everyone came from, and it gives you a percentage of how many were local and how many were from out of town.
We see a higher percentage of outside people coming in for that event, which is good for tourism purposes, and we're hoping that they're staying in our hotels and, you know, spending time in our downtown and revisiting, coming back another weekend. So, the idea is that the event, you know, what's difficult about this event is it's hard to, to measure how successful it is, because we just don't know. I mean, y- you can pull the cellphone analysis data, but, you know, that gives us a number of how many people are in the area that day, which is great, and how many people, you know, we think attended the event, which is awesome. Like, it's a good steady number, um, but the return on, on value, it's hard to measure that. You know, the idea is that the people come into town, they come and experience our music, they come and see our downtown, which is why I understand council likes to have it in our downtown and so that they can have a little, you know, a little piece of what Navasota is, get that feel and hope to bring their family back another weekend to explore what else there is to do here in Navasota.
And I'll tell you, as a downtown business center, they come back.
Can we do a rundown on each one of these events as, as far as the, where the revenue comes from and what's the expenses are?
So, we, we contract with Retail Coach, and Retail Coach is in the process of getting us that data. They switched providers of who provides that cell phone data. So, it's a little, it's been a little bit difficult to be able to pull the information. And so, like, we just received in last month, the information for Texas Birthday Bash. Uh, so, we do ask for those, for those events, um, yes, sir, we, we do get that.
We're, we're seeing trends of increased attendance at all of our events. Um, Freedom Festival is a testament to that. Um, you know, I think that's the largest event we've ever had, just from the eye view perspective of the people who attended and the feedback we had. Um, but, you know, we're also ramping up on the marketing side of things as well. So, the more we do, the more people learn about what we have to offer. Like, some people still don't even know that we do Freedom Festival or our summer events. So, you know, things are working, we just need to keep at it. Um, and, you know, we're providing this not just for our residents, um, but to try and attract more people here, to bring in more businesses, um, so that we can continue to, you know, create a better quality of life for, for our residents, update our parks and provide something to do for families and children.
Outside dollars.
And looking at the proposed rates, this says proposed for 2023.
Yes, well, sorry, we haven't really gotten to this yet, but yes.
Oh, sorry.
So, um, sorry, I went to...
I've been staring at it for ten minutes.
Sorry. Um, so, coming back onto the Texas Birthday Bash topic, you know, we talked about the cost associated to that and how, um, attempting to try and bring more of revenue back, you know, making some form of a profit from it. Like I said, it's not, you know, we're never gonna be matching. But, um, the idea is, is that if we increase, uh, the cost of tickets, um, we can try and, in, well, in my mind, we can make a return on the cost of entertainment that we're bringing into the event. So, that, like, the goal, I mean, for my department is to, the revenue from the ticket sales to cover the cost of the entertainment. So, the only...
Do you think that would deter people from coming if you go up on the ticket price, or?
I don't believe so. I mean, um, you, you know, you look around the market trends around our area and the entertainment and, and music industry, just, you know, within the vicinity, people pay to go see one of those entertainers. Um, even at Harry's, for example, you know, it's a college bar. Uh, they're paying upwards of forty-five dollars for entry to go watch just one singer. Um, you know, you look at the cost of, uh, you know, to go in for one day of Texas Birthday Bash, and, you know, we're, we're not even meeting that, so...
With fifteen dollars, twenty dollars?
So, we're proposing that a one-day admission will go up to, um, thirty dollars on the day, but if you buy them in advance, it'll be twenty-five dollars.
And in the past, what's the price been?
Um, so, last year, we had, um, it was fifteen dollars in advance and twenty dollars on the day. So, we did increase ticketing costs last year. Um, but again, we're proposing that we increase them again to continue to help with the cost of, you know, increase to continue to do this event and the quality of entertainment that, um, the community and, you know, is wanting and also what we're trying to attract here for people to come in and visit Navasota.
And this is actually the trend that was intended when we started the bash, was to increase because we would see, we, we hoped at least, we would see an increase in sales tax, and we have, and things like that. So, the, the intent was always to lessen the cost each year.
And, and, you know, just another point to make on that, um, the, the cost associated to Texas Birthday Bash, we try and keep everything local. So, we use local fencing companies, local dumpsters, you know, local porta-potties, you know, local machines that we hire to help, you know, put the stage up, things like that. You know, where we can, we try and keep, you know, things local. So, we're not just, we're, we're, you know, we're spending money on this, but, you know, we're also using local businesses that also benefit from it as well.
Well, and if you increase the cost and we lost a little bit of the people that showed up, that might not be a bad thing, 'cause maybe then you could walk.
Right.
Right? I mean, it's...
I mean, I think, um, with the new layout of Texas Birthday Bash, the event's going to continue to grow. I mean, as you continue to market it, it's, it's doing well. Um, you know, it's, it'll just become more exclusive.
And if I'm not mistaken, you're the only person in, in your department, right?
Yes, sir.
You've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
So, so, Bobby does marketing, communications, she's also the, uh, PIO, and she does events. Um, so, she never sleeps, she's on twenty-four seven. So, anytime the, the chiefs and I are communicating about any event in the middle of the night that needs publication, or whether an event needs to be known to her in case she's gonna start getting cable, TV calls, or reporters calling, she's got a phone that she has to answer and, and start preparing for that. So, um, she does a lot for a one-person show. That is why she's asking for an additional person. Um, the, the amount of, of, um, things that's, that's required of this, of this department is more than one, than one FTE can, can do. And, um, um, she's done a great job on it, and I think that's what council, it gave me the direction about, um, working on communication and transparency. And she's, she's taken that and, and led with it and far exceeded what expectations were.
Yeah, um, I'm kinda big on communication. I think that the more the citizens know, the less problems you have.
Yes, sir.
Well, I also think that new person will also bring in, oh, it'll actually probably bring in revenue to kinda help pay for it, because you'll be generating more interest in the community and...
And probably will get some rest.
Spend more money and... Anyway.
I think I have one more slide.
Yep.
Um, so, supplemental requests, um, we were approached to help assist with the Veterans Parade. Um, and then we also had the talent event thrown in there, but that's with the International Country Music Association. And then we were also asking for, uh, another separate event for the Texas Birthday Bash Announcement Party. Um, we decided to only fund one of those events, um, and that's from, you know, working with International Country Music Association. We decided that's the best fit for us to be funded for this, for this, you know, new financial year. Um, you know, since it's a large opportunity with national exposure, um, you know, that event is kinda something we wanted to add into the mix. But, like Jason mentioned before, um, the idea is to not add more events to our plate. It's try and, um, let's focus on the events that we already do have, and let's improve them and make them better. Uh, we also requested, uh, for a specific KBTX tourism awareness campaign. Um, that was gonna be done like monthly. Um, you know, like Jason also mentioned, we are working on a, uh, two-year, you know, comms camp, you know, kind of plan. Um, so, it's, it's not seen as like reasonable to start spending more money on things until we have a plan put together, and then we really know where we wanna target and where we wanna put our funds in a more, you know, strategic, um, you know, kind of action plan. Um, and then, of course, like Jason mentioned as well, um, the Main Street manager would actually fall under the marketing comms department. So, um, that supplemental request is in there. Um, that's for the cost of, you know, bringing them on board. Once we do, um, go through with becoming designated as a Main Street city. Um, but as mentioned, the state has not, um, kinda finalized the process on how we can go about that. So, until we have some more information, which, um, we've been guided that that may happen in February of next year, we will know how to begin making that process and how to become designated again, and then we'll look into funding a Main Street, um, manager when that happens. But, that's just to give you an idea of the cost associated to that. Do you have any questions? All right. Go.
Mayor and City Council, um, the library director was unable to be here today just with, um, a program that they had scheduled. So, um, if y'all can see above, um, in the library budget for this upcoming year, under the staffing section, um, the only change reflected is the promotion from library clerk to librarian. Um, so, after our previous library clerk, um, left the city earlier this month, we've recently extended an offer to another qualified candidate who will begin, um, work in the beginning of next month as our incoming library clerk. Um, and that applicant had intern, internship experience, working in a library, um, work experience in, um, the appraisal district and the council of governments in the region, um, where they currently reside. And then, um, she also has a Masters of Library Science degree. Um, and so, staff is gonna be creating an advancement plan based on performance measures put in place for the promotion of library clerk to librarian within twelve months of her employment. Um, so, that will fall within next fiscal year, so that's why it's reflected in this budget, even though it won't take place until later in the year. Um, so, some of the major budget items for the library department coming up. Um, our continuation from last year, including the summer reading program, um, facility upgrades and updates. Um, this year, the funds were used towards roof repairs and other facility repairs, so that's just a continuation to address some of the other facility concerns. Um, and the new books and magazines, which, um, this is the, the amount that needs to be kept at, at a certain level, just to main, make sure that we maintain our accreditation requirements. And then, um, supplemental requests that were put in this year that weren't funded include the Masters of Library Science course at UNT, um, computer upgrades and new furniture. Um, and as Jason had mentioned earlier, um, the city's working on a tuition reimbursement program. Um, and so, that will encompass the Masters of Library Science degree. And then, um, also, staff is going to be seeking additional grant opportunities throughout the fiscal year to help with the computer upgrades and furniture. And then, do y'all have any questions about the library? All right.
She's doing a wonderful job up there. How about a break?
Yeah, beautiful break. You call for the break then? Recession then?
Yep. We will be going to recess and return in ten minutes.
Do y'all agree to that?
We're back in session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Ozado, Development Services. Uh, so, I just wanna briefly highlight, uh, some of the changes to the proposed budget for this next upcoming fiscal year. Uh, as far as staffing, it's pretty much staying the same. There is one change, uh, we are looking at, uh, adding a building official. That was one of the many supplementals that, uh, was in that big pot, uh, that everyone asked for. This was one of the ones that, uh, we determined could be funded. Um, just a little bit of background on that position. Um, as many of y'all remember, uh, our, our previous building inspector, uh, passed away last May. We had an extended amount of time where we didn't have, uh, somebody in that role. So, we, we, we heavily utilized our third-party plan review company, SafeBilt. Uh, that's why if you look at the numbers, they're, they're, they're quite a bit higher than originally budgeted, and that was the main reason. Uh, that position was vacant for a long time. Uh, finally, in, in late of last year, we promoted, uh, Alan Summers, uh, to be a building inspector. Um, and Alan has done a great job for us. He really has helped us out on, um, kinda the smaller-scale projects. You know, your, uh, your local resident that wants to build a patio or a carport, he's kinda built that, um, added that rapport, or, or built that rapport with those residents and, and also has helped with that face-to-face conversation. But, all of our commercial and third-party big projects, that is all still currently going out to our third-party for review. And while they do a good job, it's, it's not always perfect, it's not always the best. Uh, and so, this building official will bring that back in-house for review. So, that is, that is one of the biggest changes, uh, in the budget. Um, and as Jason has mentioned, of course, the comp plan is in there. Uh, that, that's gonna be a big, a big task for us this upcoming year. Um, but anyway, with that, with that being said, uh, these are some of the, just the major, the major budget items. Aside from those two, we have forty-two thousand in substandard building demolition fund, uh, which takes care of all of our substandard buildings. Um, I know you'll see weekly on the weekly update, there's always something getting torn down and something getting taken care of by Eric, so he's doing a great job on that. Uh, we have fourteen thousand for abatement, mainly tall grass and unsightly matter cleanup. Uh, and then there's that third-party inspection services. Uh, we're still gonna have that in there as a contingency in case, uh, we struggle to fill the building official position if funded. Um, last year, when we were trying to hire the building inspector position, I even got a call from a, a neighboring larger city, and they're asking us, who are we using for our third parties? So, we're hoping that we'll be able to, we'll be able to fund the building, uh, building official position, 'cause it comes a little bit higher salary. Um, uh, but we're, we're leaving that in there for contingency purposes, just in case. And then, of course, uh, Kinley Horn Engineering, they, they're our primary review firm for subdivision construction, uh, uh, and public improvement, uh, review. And then, there's, uh, twelve thousand in staff development, which is training and education. Uh, and then, these are the supplements. And so, of course, first one, building official, I kinda already touched on that. And again, that includes their salary, um, equipment, a vehicle. Um, and then, we did ask for an additional code enforcement officer. That was, that one was not funded. However, uh, we kinda thinking through the process, if the building official is funded, we get him hired on. Uh, Alan will not only do building inspections and the smaller-scale stuff, uh, for our residents, but he's also, uh, will kinda transition that position to be dual role. So, building inspections, and then, once he's done with his inspections, he'll, he'll assist Eric with code enforcement. So, that kinda brings us, brings us back to a number of years ago when we had two code enforcement personnel. A little bit of a hybrid, uh, but if everything goes to plan, then that would be ideal to have, to have the, the additional staff based on, uh, the strategic plan and all the feedback we received. And then, again, the, the comprehensive plan, that's a, that's a big item that it'll be, it'll definitely be a group effort, uh, to get all that, um, completed. And, uh, any questions on Development Services? And, uh, any questions on Development Services? Keep Navasota beautiful. Uh, this is, uh, actually Eric, our code enforcement officer. He's the staff liaison for this, uh, for this, uh, commission. Uh, their yearly event is the trash-off event, and so that's budgeted in there. Uh, most of those expenditures are forecasting us getting those donations. So Eric's done a really good job over the years on getting, uh, getting those donations funded from businesses. So, uh, we have in there four thousand, or three thousand for expenditures, or a little over. Yeah, I guess it's four thousand. I'm blind, can't see it. So hopefully we'll get that funded and it'll be a, another successful event. Then lastly, on the technology, uh, budget, um, no changing to staffing. Uh, some of the big, big picture asks is INCODE 10. Uh, that, that really is not only, even though, you know, finance is probably the department that uses that software the most, it was a big ask from pretty much every, every person in the room. Uh, our current INCODE, uh, while last year we did migrate to the cloud, it basically took your, you know, ninety-three Civic and put it in the cloud, but it was still a ninety-three Civic. Um, this, this is the, this is the latest and greatest, uh, software. Uh, you can, you can open a PDF directly when you're looking at an invoice, you know, imagine that. So it, it, it's just going to be a major change to, uh, internal operations and it, it impacts the entire, um, city side, non, non-PD. Another big item is, you know, continuing to upgrade our computers and equipment. Uh, computers are old and they don't last forever, and so there's twenty-eight, a little over twenty-eight thousand to replace those computers, uh, as they go out. And most of the other items listed are just continuation, things that, uh, we do every year, and, uh, there is some increases that go along with it. Here's the supplementals on the IT. Again, the upgrade to INCODE 10 is the, is the biggest, uh, cost. Uh, there was also a request to upgrade the audio and video in this chambers. Um, you know, this chamber is when it was built back in twenty-ten, uh, live and Facebook Live and all of those, all of those cool technologies that are available now. It really wasn't as popular as it, as it is now. We've done some things to make it work and it, and it does its function, but it's not perfect. Um, and so this upgrade would completely revamp the audio system in here. Um, and that, that one was not funded just because there's a lot of priorities, a lot of, you know, staffing continues to be a, a number one concern. So that, that was, that was a big ticket item that maybe, maybe, maybe next year, or maybe in that, that Jason's going to talk about. Um, we did, uh, get funded for Wi-Fi, updating all the Wi-Fi in all the facilities, not just City Hall. Um, and then as well, uh, the last one is not really a supplemental, but it is a, a process that we're going to try to get done is, is all of our phone systems here at City Hall are about ten, eleven years old, uh, plus. And so, uh, upgrading to a cloud-based phone system will, will be able to integrate all city facilities under one system. So that means that you could transfer a call from City Hall Reception to Fire Department or City Hall Reception to, um, to the library, all seamlessly. And the customers won't know the difference. And then the last piece was the graduate engineer. Uh, he has some additional duties, has lots of duties. Um, so he's getting some much-needed software to, to help him do his job effectively. And I think that's, yep, that's the bulk of it. Any questions on technology?
If we put through VOIP and the power goes out, we lose phones versus a landline, correct?
So, so the way that, the way that those phones will, or will be powered is our, our server room is backed up with battery generator. Uh, those phones are connected using your standard Ethernet cable. Well, those, those phones are actually powered through that Ethernet cord. So as long as our server is backed up, which we do have backup battery in there, it'll still, it'll still function. And even today, if the power went out today, we would, we would lose our, once that battery runs out of juice, even our current phone system would be, would be out. So, uh, the benefit of this is, um, you know, let's say that we did have a major issue where, uh, we lost power, we lost all phone connectivity. Uh, we could actually set up a mobile hotspot and connect one of the main reception line to that hotspot, and those calls will continue to come in. So it has a lot of benefits, not only for day-to-day operations, but just, just for redundancy purposes if, if there's ever an event that, uh, you know, phones are down and internet's down.
And that's all city, but not the PD, not the emergency line?
Yeah, no, emergency lines, we don't touch those. Those are heavily regulated and, uh, we don't want to touch those.
No, that was my only concern was the power going out.
Alright, thank y'all.
Good evening, Mayor. This is, uh, Public Works Department. We're gonna kind of tag team this together. That's a pretty...
So, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Cornelio, Assistant Public Works Director. And, uh, our first department is sanitation. Pretty much not a lot of changes here. There's a little bit of, uh, changes on the maintenance service. In Capital Island, we had a lot of new vehicles, uh, not a lot of changes. There's only one, uh, laborer for this department. Our, uh, measure boy, uh, measure bu- budget item is, um, our, uh, city cleanup event. The one in the spring, one in the fall, the total of fifteen thousand dollars. And again, the, uh, Republic Service Contract increases a little bit of, um, um, on the budget for every year. And, uh, brush removal, we, all the stuff that we bring to the brush collection facility. Sometimes we do it every year, depends on, uh, demand. Um, this year, we're probably going to have to do that because we have a lot of brush right now to do that. So that's why I have the thirty-two. They don't come for any less than twenty-five thousand dollars because they're equipment. So we have to kind of like wait until we get, uh, the right amount of brush to make this happen.
I have one question. I don't know if it goes in here or, or someplace later on. One of the things that I've noticed, um, driving around town, is we got a lot of trees dying with the drought. And you remember a couple of years ago when we had this problem? We came back and, uh, a lot of the trees are ours and a lot of the trees belong in people's yards type thing, but they cut them up and put them out there and it'll be picked up. I don't remember how much we added, but we had to add a significant amount.
We did that two years in the role. Um, none of the trees belong to us. Even if we did on the right away, they're still responsible of the, of the owner, of the, of the home, whatever. They're responsible the way. The reason we did this because of the big drought that we had, and we have like, it was, I think it was, um, seventy-something trees that had died. So we budgeted like eighty-seven thousand. This was probably five or six years ago. Then the reminder of that, it was, uh, another extra twenty-two thousand dollars, something like that for addition of like thirty-two trees. We, we did that as a like, it was one-time expense, just because it was so many of them. Um, if we are really concerned, like you said, we are concerned by having that many. I don't know, we can bring them back and then try to help our, uh, customers by doing that. But ultimately, it is a, a customer responsibility to take care of that, those little trees.
We need some kind of contingency fund or something to do what we, what we need to do and find out what the situation really is.
I mean, I can count the trees and see how many we have. Um, it's about all we can do at this point.
And coming on the back of that is replanning.
Yep. So the, uh, the supplements for this, um, department is only the dog truck. It's a nineteen-nine mile. I can say that our truck driver doing a good job of keeping up, keep working with it because it is due. So that's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
It would replace it, so we're not adding to the fleet?
We're not adding it.
So we would sell the other one, the other one?
I don't even know if you can get anything for it.
I can get some.
Surely you can get something for it. Yeah, I'm sure we get something for it.
And then we went to the street department, same thing. There's not a lot of changes on this, uh, total amount of it. And the staffing, we are having a, um, nine people. We have, uh, asked for another extra person for this. Uh, that's the only, that's the only changes that we have. Um, and promoting one, uh, heavy equipment operator to a crew leader. The measure boy items is, uh, replaced four hundred and sixty feet. The reason, the, how we did this is just to, um, kind of identify the price for, for any fee to do it. Uh, thirty-five thousand dollars to probably fix the sidewalk, um, all the way from downtown to Walmart. We have a lot of, uh, issues. So that's the idea, to try to fix those sidewalks with this, uh, sidewalk money. And maybe, uh, uh, adding anywhere else on La Salle or on the other side of Washington. Um, the street lights and, um, the annual street maintenance project includes that, I don't know, Mr. Weeks said earlier, uh, the four hundred and sixty thousand, and that also includes professional fees for engineering. Our supplemental request is that, like I said earlier, the street maintenance laborer, one person, and, uh, traffic signs and trailer. This trailer would help us on events and everything that we have. As a trailer, including twelve, um, ba- uh, type-three barricades and fifty cones. That was not funded.
I have a question for you on the streetlights. What, what exactly is that?
The streetlights are, um, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Weeks, this is electricity, correct? So, for, strictly for, uh, all the, um...
That's a recurring item.
And we don't, we don't include it in the electricity. It's considered streetlights. It's what we pay for, streetlights.
Any other questions on the streets?
Yes, I do, I do have one. Uh, on the heavy equipment operator, you changed from three to two?
Yes.
Is, is there a reason why?
So we've been having that position as a crew leader open. Uh, we had a currently, uh, person that it was a heavy, he was, he was, he was the crew leader, but he got demoted to a, um, heavy equipment operator. That's the only reason why we have a third one. So basically what they did is to switch that because he could, he wasn't able to, uh, perform the duties as a crew leader. So what I'm doing is basically promote him a, uh, a, a heavy equipment operator, basically swap him. That's all I'm doing. It's on the same, it's within the same, um, department.
Okay, so if you look in the budget, the budget has eight people. We had a crew, uh, we'd budgeted for a crew leader and two heavy equipment operators. But currently, end of year estimate, which means the way we're going to end this year, we're not going to have a crew leader because he had to demote somebody. We're going to have three heavy equipment operators. So we went up one this year, heavy equipment operator. So what he's saying is, next year, he has an employee that he can promote into that crew leader position to go back the way it was. So originally, we already had the one, one crew leader and the, the, the two heavy equipment operators. So we're going back to that.
Yeah, and, and we added a laborer to that.
And, and they're adding an additional position too.
Now, let me ask a question, um, because I ride around town quite a bit, looking at the streets and, and the water running down the streets and everything. Is, is one person enough to get, get everything done in a time of the matter?
Were you talking about water leak? You say water running down the street?
Right.
Is that what you meant?
Uh, well, just any maintenance, uh, towards the streets.
Yeah, so basically what I have right now, three, we have a three people that make the, all those, um, digging ditches, working on the street cuts. So three people, uh, if I add a new person, I can actually have two crews. So two can do digging ditches and the other two can do, uh, we have plenty of equipment. You just don't have enough people to maintain those crews. So it will be, will be more efficient if we have two crews running instead of just two crews of two instead of only one of three people. So that definitely will help us drastically to move, uh, to be more efficient on what we do.
Okay, uh, I guess, uh, another question that I have is that, on the potholes, uh, do you all just ride around and look for them, or do you just wait until you get a complaint?
No, we normally have an area where we run, we drive to. As a matter of fact, where we, Mr. Weeks, we were talking about having actual plan and have a, we got a work orders that we go by. It's very difficult to keep up because of, again, um, we've been dealing with, uh, ver- with two, two people, uh, short right now. So it's been difficult to keep up. So when we get out there and trying to do this area, uh, you got a drought or start dri- start wet. I mean, when it start raining, it increases. So it's very difficult to keep up with it. Of course, the more people we have, the better we off. But at this point, but yeah, we normally have actual schedule to go out and patch potholes. We don't wait until somebody complain, uh, about it.
So, so what you're saying is that you think that you can do the job a lot better with just only one more person?
At this point, I think so too. I think so.
But that would...
But, but we got, we've been shorthanded too. So it's been, it's been difficult.
By two. So we're, we're, we have two vacant employees, plus we're adding another one. So right now, we're just kind of doing what we can with a s- a small, very small crew.
That's what I hear the most of is potholes and the streets and things. And just want to make sure that we can get the work done with the amount of people that we have, but do we need to consider someone else?
Make sure he's got the tools he needs.
Right, right, right. Yeah, yeah.
Right, so staffing will help, but the capital improvement projects will be, um, the best, um, way to go about getting the streets, uh, to where they need to be, is going into...
Less repaired.
So you're doing this capital as, as what we hoping for, to minimize the main, maintenance of the street by doing a capital improvement?
Yeah, well, the capital improvement is going to take a while, but we're talking might have fixed.
So we got our annual maintenance too. So the annual maintenance, four hundred and sixty thousand. So, um, right after the budget's approved, um, staff will go back and start working with engineering company at, to identify what next set of streets is going to get the, the old, the, uh, chip seal project. So who's going to get that next year? So the idea is to continue looking at those streets and programming those upfront. And then each year, then going back and evaluating, does this street still need to be here, or is another street that's worse? So you've got that on top of the potholes. Uh, so, um, you're, you're outsourcing a lot of the, the big projects.
Okay.
Uh, so staff will go in and try to do some of the, the smaller projects related to the potholes.
Well, I guess that's what I'm talking about, of the smaller projects, that, that we have enough employees to take care of the smaller projects.
And I think that's what, um, Public Works told me when they went through the budget. One person is all they needed this year.
Once, once they're fully staffed.
Yeah, once, yeah, once they're fully staffed, that, so that's...
Yeah, okay, you have two crews.
Yeah.
The other persons.
And with the pay scales that we improved on, hopefully the hiring won't be as hard to, to do.
We hope.
Yeah, we hope.
Parks and facility maintenance, um, again, there's not a big change on these budget items. Everything is look about the same on the budget compared to last year. Uh, we have two, um, we have a three employees on this, um, department. Uh, we're not asking for anybody else. We're fully staffed on this department right now. The measure budgets is the, um, the annual co- the annual contract, I'm, I'm currently working on that. We budgeted three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. It was, uh, the last one is two hundred and sixty-two, I believe, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the last one. So, I mean, we hoping that it's coming low, but we never know. It can be more than that. So we're currently working on that. And, uh, maintenance of the Horlock House, this is just an item. Uh, two repairs on the Horlock House, it's like a normal house stuff. Uh, same with the Navasota Center and, um, facility maintenance in general, ten thousand dollars. To remember for this, uh, we need some chairs and tables for the Navasota Center and roller chairs for those windows at the Navasota Center and ceiling fans. City Hall.
The Horlock House, the six thousand dollars. Didn't we talk about painting, putting money in the budget?
Yes, so that's in, yes, we have, we have that in for the current budget, along with the new roof. Um, and that's coming from hotel motel funds. So this is just for general maintenance, uh, yeah, general maintenance items.
This one it was fun to work with. Thank you, Mr. Weeks, for helping with this one. Um, not a lot of changes. We got a two, uh, building custodians. It is going to be a slightly change on this one. Um, we do norm- we normally have, uh, the custodian, we, we want to promote a senior custodian for this one. Um, we always have one person that we're relating to, to talk to. They have to carry the phone. They are a little more responsible. So I feel like it's fair to move, promote one to be the, uh, senior custodian for this item, for this, uh, pro- um, department. The measure boy items is, uh, continue the City Hall general supplies, which everybody gets... The major budgets is continue the city hall general supplies, which everybody gets from that. General supplies, thirteen thousand. General maintenance of the building, we got a hundred thousand dollars on this, and property and vehicle insurance policy is a hundred and forty thousand dollars every year. And is there any other questions on the city hall?
So, if we're increasing the number of people at city hall, staffing-wise, are desk, the cost of desk and office furniture put into their...
Their supplementals. Yeah, so, everybody, again, so, when you see a person, and it's, so, for instance, I'll use the marketing person, and it says eighty thousand dollars, that is not just salaries. So, that includes...
Insurance desks.
Laptops, printers, training, travel, any furniture that's needed, any desk chairs, whatever it is, they're included in their specific budget and general supplies. So, in here, general supplies is the copy paper, the copy paper that everybody uses, the main copy room, everything that goes through there, that is the general supplies.
So, I'm going to go ahead and begin my section. It's vehicle services, vehicles and equipment services. I have two staff. This budget hasn't really increased anything over the years. It usually stays the same. Supplemental requests, we requested to do some renovations and a lift. That one did not get funded this year. The airport, that usually has stayed the same. I have my annual ramp grant of fifty thousand dollars, which may increase. I'm waiting on a response from Tex dot Aviation, and that might increase up to a hundred thousand dollars. So, we use those funds for our, any type of, this year, for an example, I did the crack seal repairs on the runway, and then I'll start doing other maintenance on the taxiway and the access roads, the ramps. Supplementals for the airport was a new ramp to the north end of the airport of three hundred and ten. We're going to look into that later on, maybe consider a CIP project for that. And then, y'all have any questions on airport or vehicle services?
Oh, yes. One quick, I forgot, I didn't know who I was supposed to notify, but the white truck just stayed parked out here. You got a taillight out.
Okay, okay. One of the trucks?
Yes, on the white, I guess the janitor truck.
Yeah, the janitor truck.
We'll take care of that.
You don't want to get stopped, bud.
He didn't.
Our water fund, Jason went over a lot of this earlier. Total revenues are a little bit over five million, five point seven million. Our expenses are a little over ten. Again, Jason went over that earlier in our slides. Our water fund, we have a total of seven, not much change, other than we took the position from the parks and rec to our new engineer, and we moved that over into the water fund. We're going to promote a employee from a utility technician into a crew leader with this budget as well for the water fund. Our major budget items, I'm just going to talk on a few of them. We have chemicals to treat our water, that's our chlorine, that's kind of gone up in pricing. Plant maintenance is thirty thousand. I've added SCADA maintenance. That helps us maintain our SCADA. I want to make sure that we keep that up and running pretty good, do some annual maintenance, maybe add some items on that SCADA. Our water well maintenance, as you know, we had a couple wells that went down on us. So, I need to keep that budget, kind of making sure our wells are maintained. They are old, they are aging, and we found some information earlier that our last well was in ninety-seven, was drilled in ninety-seven?
Yeah, our last well was drilled in ninety-seven.
Yes, sir. So, those are aging and need to be maintained. TCQ permits and well production is thirty thousand. Our capital improvement of a new water well is one point nine. We have a lot of meters and meter supplies that we have to keep up with. All new construction with all the new development, and then keeping up with just maintenance on that. Fire hydrant, again, is a hundred thousand. We're going to keep on maintaining the hydrants and repairing those in our general maintenance on the hydrants, on what's not being completed in the CIP or the fire hydrant replacement. Do y'all have any questions on major budget items for the water fund? Supplemental requests, we have over, that's funded, salaries adjustments of a little over eleven thousand, certification pays, and public works promotions. And then, again, that traffic message board that we're going to split up by thirds, water and sewer and gas. Any questions on the water fund? Natural gas, our natural gas revenues are about six point four millions. Our expenses are seven point six. A lot of that, again, was addressed by Jason and earlier in our discussions. We have a total of four employees in our gas department. We have two vacancies now. I'm promoting one gas technician to an operator, and then a gas foreman to a utility superintendent. So, some promotions within that department. Again, we have two vacancies in that department currently. That's been vacant, one has been vacant for a while, so we're shorthanded in that department. Major budget items, we talked about gas purchases, it's a little over four million dollars. Gas meter supplies, a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Our gas regulator station for professional fees is fifty thousand. Public awareness and damage prevention is sixty-five hundred dollars. And basically, that's advertisement for our gas for no call, eight-one-one. So, that gives us, we have to put out enough information to the public about eight-one-one. So, that's something that we do. We outsource some of that. You see a little survey card in there, that's coming from the city of what you know about our natural gas. Again, we have the capital improvement with the Pecan Lakes, gas loop and extension, for over, a little over a million dollars. We currently have a meeting with Strand this week. They're about thirty percent on the design phase of that project, and then we'll continue on with that. I'll give you more updates as that comes in on the capital improvement. Supplemental requests that was funded is the natural gas salary adjustments, certification pays, promotions, two gas line locators, and the traffic message signboard with the trailer. Again, that was split up by thirds. What's happening here?
I'm going to sleep.
Tired.
No, she's going to throw my hair.
Okay, any questions on the gas?
Jennifer, your time is up. Three more minutes, hurry up.
Okay, wastewater fund, our revenues is a two point five million, our expenses at two point six. We have a total of five personnel, well, four this year, we're going to add another one. We're going to be adding a water wastewater operator into this department. It's very much needed. When I say water wastewater operator, they take care of all the wells, the lift stations, the water plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and let me tell you, that wastewater treatment plant is enough work for another person. It's a lot of work out there. Maintenance alone, to keep up with all the lift stations and the daily duties that they perform, is quite a bit. The major budget items, I'm going to touch on fuse jobs. Of course, we have the chemicals, the wastewater treatment plant, annual maintenance is around a hundred and ten thousand, sludge removal is right at about twenty thousand, permits, about fourteen thousand, live fees is about thirty-six thousand. Of course, we have the capital improvement plan, but that's phase two of the project, which is the clarifier repairs that they're working on now, and the two rotors that need to be replaced. We have super main maintenance of twenty-five, lift station at seventy-five. Pumps are very expensive to pull them and replace them. It's a big cost on any kind of pump that goes out on lift stations. Moving on to supplementals that have been funded, adjustments and benefits, certification pay, promotions. We were looking into a grant for the wastewater treatment plant for generator replacement. We have an old generator that needs to be replaced. We just got word that that grant is not available for our county. So, we're not going to get that grant on that. So, we'll have to look, we'll have to look in other ways to replace that generator. And then, again, we're going to be adding a water wastewater operator and traffic message signboard with trailer. Hey, any questions for Public Works?
Yes. Is this the same sign as what the police department was talking about, or is this two signs?
It's just the one sign that has that message board. Mr. Weeks was saying that slow down, or road closures, or...
The police department doesn't have a sign.
Right. We're going to share it.
So, there's only one sign board that water, sewer, and gas is paying for one sign. It's similar to what Tex dot uses on the road, that's the sign board.
We're going to rent it out to the police department.
Just one.
Yeah. Quick with that one, too.
Any other questions for Public Works?
Mayor and city council, here's the breakdown of revenues and expenditures coming up for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the EDC. Just one thing noting is, sales tax projected increase year over year, and that's provided from HDL, the consultant that we use, sales tax consultant. They provide us with those revenue breakdowns and estimates of future years, just based on kind of what we're seeing, trends, growth, and then also new businesses coming in. Major budgeted items for the next fiscal year, most of it is just a continuation from the previous year. So, the big ones to note are the annual parking lot, and then funding set aside for special projects that come up throughout the year to fund economic development incentives. So, that hundred thousand isn't necessarily used every year, and it's, I mean, since its existence of being budgeted, it's never been fully used. But, we put that in there just on a case-by-case basis of prospects that might come up and request funding. Supplemental requests for this year include Placer AI's data analysis tool. So, this provides us with updated data based on cell phone analysis, similar to what the retail coach provides. This is something that we could pool data whenever we'd like, instead of having to wait the turnaround time from the retail coach. And additionally, it provides other information, such as vehicle traffic volumes, similar to the annual average daily traffic counts that Tex dot provides. But, this is data that goes back as current as three days prior versus Tex dot's numbers are two years prior. So, we don't have updated data on that. So, this is really great when it comes to providing information for developers, investors interested in locating in Navasota, and then also, different from the data that Tex dot provides, we can do this for any location in the Navasota streets, along Highway Six, one oh five, versus the Tex dot data where it has specific points. So, that's helpful for us, especially for site-selecting purposes. And then, there's other benefits to the data tool as well. And so, then, the other supplemental request labeled as EDC education includes additional workshops throughout the year. So, a few years back, we hosted the franchise ownership workshop. So, that would be adding that in as the annual event, just because of the success from a few years back. Historical tax credit workshop, doing business in Navasota, et cetera, and then also the costs associated with hosting a regional roundtable session for Texas Downtown Association, hosting that next year here in downtown Navasota. And so, under, it says, "request funded," but technically, these have not been funded or denied yet, per se. The EDC meeting is coming up this Wednesday, and these requests will be presented to the board at that time.
What's a retail coach?
The retail coach is the consultant that the EDC partners with to provide just helpful information on data, demographics, our retail trade area, and then also, they help with retail recruitment. So, they were key in helping with us getting Chicken Express, setting up the meetings with HEB, and then also with Burger King. And the EDC has partnered with them for over ten years. And then, they also represent the EDC and the city at different events like Retail Live, ICSC, and some of the ones that even if staff or the city doesn't budget to attend, like the ICSC Vegas Trade Show that we attended this year, and years prior, we haven't attended, but they'll go and represent us on our behalf.
Keep our name out there.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
On the home stretch here, so, other funds, so, as we talked about earlier, so, hotel motel funds, this is your HOT funds. When you go and stay at a hotel, there's a tax that's not on your bill. It's not, it's not the sales tax, anything like that. It's called the hotel occupancy tax. And so, we receive funds from our hotels we have here. And last year, we received around a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two ninety-five. So, that is our audited numbers, based on the opening of the PA Smith, being open, hoping for a full year, as well as some upticks we've seen at the new bed and breakfast here on South LaSalle. Those numbers have increased up to a hundred and sixty, based on revenue projections we've seen so far this year. So, we kept it same for next year. And so, when you talk about expenses, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, kind of give you an idea of what major budget items. So, as I mentioned earlier, you can only use hotel motel funds for a specific purpose. There is, it's a two-part test, and it's not just heads and beds. And so, part of that is, going through the two-part test is, one-seventh of your funds can be used for advertising, fifteen percent can be used for the arts, a hundred percent could be used for, if you have a historic building or location, such as the Horlock House, as well as the newest one that they're able to provide is for wayfinding signage. So, we partner with the Arts Council of Brazos Valley to oversee the majority of our HOT funds that we are able to provide out. And so, they oversee the Navasota in Residence program. And so, we go through that twice a year, where we, where they solicit for applications to be our artists, and they stay in our Horlock House and able to do their paintings or whatever they're going to do during that time. In the past, we've had, I think at one time, up to three people. And so, we've been working with the Arts Council of Brazos Valley to try to step up their game on our Navasota Artists in Residence program. And in addition to that, we are looking at bringing in-house what we call grants. And so, the other piece, what the Brazos Valley Arts Council does, is they administer our artists in residence, but they also have a grants program. The grants program is, you have to be, I think, a five oh one C three, and have been a, paying a specific fee to the Arts Council. have been a, paying a specific fee to the Arts Council for X amount of years and to receive consideration for the grants. And the majority, over the last three or four years, it's been the Navasota Theater Alliance has received funding, Washington on the Brazos received funding, and the Chamber has received funding for a specific wine walk event, Red Wings and Blue, or something like that, event. And so, staff, now that we have a grants coordinator, we are bringing in, back in-house, the grant portion of it. So, the Arts Council, their board agreed to allow us to bring that back, and they're still just going to specialize only on the artists' residence. We're working with legal counsel, as well as staff and their office, on entering into a new agreement with them that specifies these new things, because the current agreement is over ten years old. It says things that we're doing that we shouldn't be doing and things that we should be doing that we're not doing. I mean, there's just back and forth. And so, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page here for that. But so, looking at how the funds are administered, we go based on the previous year's audited numbers. So, I can't, I don't know if I'm going to get one hundred and sixty thousand, so I can't say, Arts Council, I'm going to give you fifteen percent of one hundred and sixty or one-seventh of it. I'm going to go based on what we audited. And so, the twenty thousand, seven forty-four is fifteen percent of the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and one-seventh is the nineteen thousand. So that's what's in the budget for next year. In addition to that, we've got for next year, at the Horlock House, we've got some other upkeep projects related, I think in the kitchen area, that's around five thousand dollars, and there's a need for an upgrade to the HVAC, which we've projected ten thousand this year. We've received some bids. Again, we're required to get three written bids, and it's hard to get that third bid, so we at least have two bids for the painting of the Horlock House and the new roof. And so, hopefully, over the next month, we'll be able to move forward with that project. And the last piece is the wayfinding signage. So, we moved forward with just the wayfinding signage and the downtown signage that was approved based on what is allowed by code. And so, that was phase one. So, phase two is the wayfinding signage. Again, it's finishing out some parking signage, some other signage, as well as doing, coming in town, the internal wayfinding signage. So, for instance, once you get to, let's say, Brose, it would actually have a sign that points, hey, down here's the Navasota Center, down here is the swimming pool, and right here is the admin building for the high school, I mean, for the Navasota ISD, and then go straight to downtown, that type. So, it'd be in-town wayfinding, as well as it also include the signage for our disc golf course. Capital projects, so this is the one of the big ones that I wanted to have some conversation with you about. So, capital projects, right now, if you look over here, we're projecting around four point eight million dollars in capital projects with bond proceeds of five thousand. As you know, city staff does everything we can to find other sources of revenue, whether it's going out for grants, whether it's donations, or whether it's sponsorships or whatever. However, we can't keep continuing using our maintenance and operations, our M and O tax rate portions, to pay for capital projects. And so, a lot of the capital projects you see before you, we, according to our financial advisor and bond counsel, we are in the process of purchasing the Navasota Theater Alliance property. However, if, once that deal hasn't, we haven't closed on it yet, we're still waiting for a closing date with the title company, but the deal is, if within sixty days, you can go back and do a reimbursement resolution. So what that reimbursement resolution says, we can issue debt to pay ourselves back for this expense. This expense is in the general fund, it is in end-of-year estimate, it's already accounted for in everything that you've seen before you. If you want to reclaim some of that money and do it for other purposes, you can issue debt for it, as well as the development of the parking lot, which is estimated around fifty thousand dollars for a privacy fence, I think it's a privacy six-foot, six-foot chain-link fence with slats to go around it, so that with a sliding, not mechanical, sliding gate there to house most of our PD patrol units, as well as any of our other vehicles that we have that can fit in there. So, that's an option. As I mentioned before, Union Pacific has three parcels of property. The cost is, at the minimum, two hundred and sixty-three, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, but since preparing this budget, there are some additional things that UP wants us to jump through hoops on this. And so, I'm not comfortable at this point finalizing that until we've had further discussion, at least the mayor and I had further discussion with the Union Pacific rep, and if we need to have other discussions with state representatives about what we consider, staff considers extortion on trying to purchase this property. I don't think that we should have to pay for traffic studies that will show that traffic's increased, and therefore, we need to pay for all the new traffic signals, the actual, what do they call?
Arms.
Arms, yeah, the arms come down. So, you've got three crossings right there that they would say would be affected, and they're about two hundred and fifty thousand each. And so, depending on how many you have to have at each intersection there, I don't think, I just don't think that's, I mean, if we're going to do that, we might as well go to a quiet zone and get something out of it. But again, it's not something that I'm sold on, but it was something that they are willing to sell the property, but I just don't, I just don't think, it's a lot. And so, there's further discussion we need to have. As Public Works Director mentioned, additional ramp for the north end of the airport. If you remember, this year, we extended the utilities to the north end. There is some opportunity, we might be able to use some of our ramp funds that we get, the increased funding for it, but we're not for sure on this. So that is another resource. In addition to that, another resource could be maybe asking some of our, whoever wants to develop out there, that they have to pay a cost portion of it, or we're going to have to issue debt for it. So those are questions that we, I don't have answers for, that only you are going to be able to provide me some thoughts on. The police department, as the chief talked about dispatch consoles, he did have a deal where, you know, those were about thirty-seven thousand dollars for five to seven years. Again, stopping the trend of paying for capital items over a period of time that could be issued out for capital, this is something that's over five thousand dollars, the useful life on this, how long have we had the dispatch consoles now?
Well...
Yeah, so, the life value is quite significant, so issuing debt for this would be a great, a great source. The upgrade to the autovisual system in the council chambers, again, that's wherever you feel that you need to. We've got, we're not exactly where we want to be. I have seen on social media that there are some deficiencies on people that are not able to come to the meetings. It's hard for them to understand what's going on here. So, that's a decision that you will need to make. And then we get into our park improvements. So, part of Strategic Plan talked about park improvements, so we talked about several of these. Ryan did about a pavilion at Hillside Park, around three hundred thousand. Now, we do have, my understanding is, we have somebody that might be able to provide some donations, but again, it's three hundred thousand. I've not heard someone willing to pay three hundred thousand, so there's a cost there. At, and the location of it is at the, it's right there at the corner, right directly across from the Nelk Building there. And so, right there, as you go down to Hillside, would be where the pavilion is. Right next to that, looking at doing a parking lot, and then behind that, doing a restroom, and then you've got your pickleball courts. And so, the school district was like, hey, I don't mind updating the pickleball courts, but it'd be nice, and we have elderly people there if there was a restroom facility. And so, something that we could look at, and of course, that's around a hundred thousand dollars. And then, as Ryan mentioned about the pier at Patto Pond, around fifteen thousand dollars. Now, he also talked about, it's all up in the air. Well, it is, because we've been approached by a developer that wishes to do some type of housing, whether it's small homes or townhomes, or I call them brownstone homes, where there may be a two-story, maybe it's the kitchen and living room downstairs and two bedrooms upstairs type townhome. So, they're looking at options, whether they could do both sides of the pickleball court for that development, or just on the east side. And so, that developer wants to meet with staff in several weeks with an architect and kind of look at what that would look like. So, really don't know even if that would come to fruition, if that location, because it's the only location a pavilion could go at Hillside due to the location of Hillside and the floodway. So, the location we're talking about putting the pavilion is in the flood plain, but not in the floodway. As you get closer to Hillside Park, then you get in the floodway. It's not something we would want to spend a lot of money on if there's a possibility that it could flood through there and ruin some of the foundation. Municipal swimming pool improvements, Ryan went over most of this. The pool plaster's around one hundred and twenty-five thousand, pool fence is thirty-five thousand, pool decking sixty-five, wall repairs for bathhouse twenty-five, and the locker room stalls and repaint. And then, the big thing that we talked about is the expansion of Mansliscum Cedar Creek Park's expansion. That's around three point two million dollars. That would include an accessible playground splash pad, around one point one million, restroom around a hundred and fifty thousand, and then parking lot, which include forty-eight spaces and nine handicapped slash banned spaces, two pedestrian bridges, one over Duke, is it Duke? Duke Street, and the other one would be right behind Councilman Peterson's location, where it's the old...
The old railroad bridge.
The old railroad bridge. Yeah, so it would be that, as well as trails and sidewalks, nine benches, trashcans, and then what we consider the Navasota sign, something we haven't showed you yet, but it's similar to what you would see in front of HEBs, what you, if you've been to Bryan, to their new event center, it says Bryan, Texas. They're big, huge signs that you go out and it's a place to take photos at, and it will say Navasota. And so, all of that is one point six million. Land for the trails and sidewalks, around fifty-four thousand, because we're going to need to get some easements through there. Engineering, nearly three hundred thousand for the total project cost of over three point two million. I put in the proposal to issue COs. COs wouldn't be till spring, summer of next year after the audits finished. And so, again, staff will aggressively seek any grant funding. The staff's already been meeting to find funding for this park's expansion project. Just to kind of give you an idea, a debt payment of four hundred and fifty thousand would need to increase the interest seeking portion of the tax rate in 2025, so not this budget year, but the next year, of around six point five cents for a total projected tax rate of fifty-eight point seven five cents. So, explain to you where, so when I came, your debt was, or when your total tax rate was fifty-six point nine three cents, which is not far from the fifty-eight point seven five, but due to the legislature caught, you know, telling us, hey, you've got to bring your tax rate down because you can only get X amount of revenue, we went from fifty, you know, fifty-six, nine, three, all the way down to fifty-two cents. And so, the idea, again, is by issuing debt, you can keep your tax rate level and provide capital projects that residents keep demanding, and the expectations are for the city. And so, I'm not asking for any, this is just for us to mull on. Over the next couple of meetings, we'll have further discussions on this, but that is what the capital projects piece is, is to tell you, we can't use M and O, we're going to have to other, find other funding, and that funding more than likely needs to come from debt issuance. Debt service, and so debt service kind of gives you an idea of where we are debt service-wise. So, you'll look here, we had actual eight hundred and seventy-four thousand debt service fund balance, and we draw down to four hundred and forty-nine. That was planned. Eight hundred and seventy-four thousand is a lot of fund balance, so we didn't have a lot of the transfers coming over as like we should. So if you look here, we brought in only one point five this year, and we spent one point eight in debt payments. So that's part of the reason. We're pulling down on some of that planned debt. Grant fund, so on the grant fund, as mentioned earlier, three hundred thousand dollars, that is for the comprehensive plan update and zoning subdivision. Again, once we get that grant, the revenue will come in there and offset by transferring out those payments to the general fund to pay for those costs. Cemetery fund, I mentioned this earlier, we get money in from selling cemetery spaces and whatnot, and then we spend the seventy-seven thousand dollars on maintenance of the roads out there.
Where's that made leave money? Where is that? Is that a separate fund?
So, you're talking about the permanent, the permanent fund? So, the interest coming in, so that, see that where it says transfer, transfer in two hundred and twenty-five? That's the interest off of that amount that we get to spend. So, we have the cemetery permanent fund, which I don't show you here because we can't spend it, but that's where this transfer in's coming from. It's coming in from, we can only spend the interest that's earned on it. And again, that's all we got in for. Board of Firemen service, so the chief already mentioned it, related to the volunteers insurance program, and then, of course, the TERS that we talked about earlier, is only going to bring in fourteen thousand dollars, so we'll have a nice, healthy fund balance moving forward for next year. And then, our 501(c)(3), again, brings in a small amount of donations, and the most of that is spent materials and supplies related to Blue Santa and those type of programs. Just so you'll know, budget calendar, so the plan is, next council meeting on August twenty-eighth, I will put a budget item, an item on the workshop to discuss the budget further. In addition to that, we'll be talking about three to four policies that we want to have discussion with. And then also, I'll put on the August twenty-eighth, continued budget discussion in case we don't have enough time at the four-thirty workshop and you want to discuss it further on the twenty-eighth. September eleventh, so September eleventh, even though we're not going over the voter approval tax rate, we still have to ratify that tax rate, which is reflected in the proposed budget. We have to have a public hearing on the budget and the tax rate that day, and then we vote on the first reading of the budget and tax rate. We also vote on the utility rate increases, the first reading, as well as the republic services rate increases. Then lastly, on September twenty-fifth, is when we finalize everything. So, that's the second reading of all those ordinances related to the budget, the tax rate, the utility rates, and the republic services. Any other questions? So, on this item, I know I put in here, it's a little bit unusual, I put in here action on this. I think some of you asked, what does that mean? And so, the action, what I asked is, I'm not asking you to approve the budget, because we definitely got several things we need to talk about as we move through that and finalize the budget. What I'm asking for is giving myself and Ms. Peggy the authority to move forward with doing the postings and starting getting the new positions up and going. We've got job descriptions that's got to be done and finalized, we've got to get postings up and going, we've got to get, you go through the hiring process, and then once you decide who you want, then we got to go through the drug screen process, which is around two weeks? No, about two weeks to get that. And then, if someone has a job, then they've got to give their two-week notice. Ideally, we would like to get these people on board as quickly as possible. October first would be, would be great. I mean, you've heard, staff, they've already got some positions that's meant not be able to be filled, but the soonest we can get on, trying to get staff, is going to be a lot better. We are ready, without even your authority, I've already had to move forward, and we're already posting the SRO, because we can't wait. I mean, the school district's got to move forward with that. And so, all I'm asking is to approval to, not for budget authority, but for posting authorities and moving forward with getting that up and going.
Now, if we have some issues with the budget here...
Now, if we have some, um, some issues with the budget here, uh, would that affect some of the hiring?
So if you, if you have, if you have a, if you have an issue with, um, any of the positions, then that's a discussion we need to have, and, and, and no, no direction needs to be given, unless, um, unless there's a specific one that you wanna further discuss. Um, but other than that, we're not asking for any dollar amount to be given authority for. We, we have to go through a budget pro- we have to go through the budget, um, public hearing, which will advertise the public hearing, which is gonna be on September eleventh. Next council meeting, we'll have further discussions. So between now and then, any other questions you might have, those are the times between now and then to start preparing those questions, get with me, uh, prior to it. Hopefully, you can get those answered before we actually have the meeting, and so we can reha- you know, bring those up as a group and have those discussions on any questions you might have on August twenty-eighth.
That was a lot. Um, I don't know that it's, I don't know that I am comfortable saying, go ahead and go with hiring if we don't even know if we're gonna approve the budget yet. Um, that seems a little, the cart before the horse, so to speak. Um, at least in my mind, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but...
A- and that's fine. I, I, again, I was just trying to get up on, on starting up and, and moving forward with it.
Well, it makes sense, but what if you come back and say, oh, well, we really don't need that position, we really need to do something else? And then we're like, okay, well, you've already approved and started the process to hire somebody for a position that now you think you don't need, or...
So, so again, staff has put together the budget.
I, I under- I understand the concept.
And, and I, and I don't think you're gonna have, i- if anything, you're gonna have staff saying, hey, I, I might need additional people other than this. But what's been approved here, uh, and the way that we, the way that the budget was put together, uh, was, um, anybody that asked for a position got in the funded call, okay? And so that meant the fire chief got one person funded. The police department unfortunately got two people, because SRO was un- unfunded mandate. And so everybody else won. Then we all met in this room. Salaries, certica- certification pay, um, the promotions, and those people was the only thing that we had saying, here was gonna be funded. Okay, group, directors, what do, where do we wanna go from here? Everybody in this room agreed on what you had before you.
That's great.
And so, so I don't, I don't see of them changing what they, what they've asked.
Well, it may be us changing it after we decide, after we look at the budget, and that's what I'm suggesting, that I don't know that we can say, yeah, let's go ahead and approve all the hires. I mean, SRO, sure, I mean, that, that seems to me a, a no-brainer for the one that we've, I've been told that we gotta do, and with the school, the agreement, so, that's my personal thought.
Any other questions?
My comment is that I do have some questions that I will visit with you about on the budget there, one-on-one then.
Okay.
And I'll be ready to move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to start the proceedings to hire the people mentioned in the budget.
Oh, second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second, by Ms. Peterson, to, uh, allow the city manager to move forward with the, um, hiring of the recommended positions, would that be?
Posting.
The posting, excuse me, posting of the, um, recommended budgeted positions.
Is that legal, Carrie?
Is that good, Carrie?
Here's what he's, this is what he said.
I know what Bernie said. She doesn't say what he said.
You, you could move forward with the posting and so forth, um, i- in order to expend the money, it's gotta be budgeted. So it would be subject to the final budget anyway. Legally, you couldn't spend the money on it until you budget it, so...
Can't hire them till the budget comes in.
Correct.
Subject to final approval of budget.
Well, I, I think that would be implied, just from, you know, legally, you can't. So, so the, the motion again was to move, just, it was what's printed here, right, so...
Can we read it?
Is that the way Bernie stated it?
Sorta, it's on the page in the, the item, it's the last gel of the...
So, to move forward with the posting of the positions.
Yes, sir. Without the lights coming on. Yeah, can you turn the lights back?
It's the paragraph right before the action required by city council.
Right before action on that.
It's, it's really just approving the process, installing the process, the posting, and going through that.
This is the, the green page.
It's all, it's all subject to the budget being approved legally, um, because they, until those positions are funded, they can't be hired, so, it's legal, it would be legal at this point to take that action.
We still need to take, I mean, that, that action would need to be taken. That could be taken.
That could be taken, and yes, their positions would be subject to the council's approval of the final budget.
Okay, we, we amend that to say, we authorize the city manager to work with the human resources director to speed up this process, so that most of the positions could begin on October first, twenty twenty-three. Motion and second, to further discussion. Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, it's still a process, um, approval, not a, not a, a, uh, position, a budgeted position approval.
It's not a money, it's not a financial decision.
Correct, it would still be, that's still legal, yes, council member, yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, seeing none, item carried.
No, no, sir, we got two more items.
Got two more items? I was just looking at the clock, sorry.
Bang the gavel.
Good boy, they're playing out here.
Sorry, destroyer. Item number seven.
Consideration possible action on proposal to adopt tax rate for twenty twenty-three, and announce time, date, and place of public hearings and the meeting to vote on the tax rate.
Thank you. Um, so on August first, the Graham's County Appraisal District, um, provided the calculations for the no new revenue tax rate, um, they calculated it at point five zero eight five. And, uh, they also calculated the voter approval rate at point five two two one. Uh, the no new revenue tax rate, um, imposes the same amount of taxes, uh, as last year, if you compare the properties taxed in both years. The voter approval rate is the highest tax rate that a taxing unit can adopt without having to hold an election. So for FY twenty-three to twenty-four, um, the proposed rate is point five two two one. And a public hearing on that, that rate is not required. Um, this proposed tax, tax rate is actually a reduction of point zero three three nine, um, or six point one percent from the current tax rate. So fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget was built around that, um, that rate of point five two two one. Um, and the break, breakdown is, uh, for M and O, it's gonna be point four six eight nine. For INS, it's point zero five three two. So in accordance with current state legislation, um, excuse me, we, uh, will be placing a notice on the examiner to inform the public of the date and time that council will vote and approve the tax rate. We anticipate publishing the notice seven days prior to the public meeting, which will take place on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Lastly, uh, please be advised that tonight's action regarding the approval of the proposed tax rate will be a record vote that will be published in the notice regarding the public meeting on September eleventh.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city of Navasota propose to adopt a tax rate of zero point five two two one per one hundred dollars evaluation for the tax year twenty twenty-three, and hold a public hearing at six PM on September the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at the city coun- council chambers located at two hundred East McAlpin Street, and a meeting to adopt the tax rate on first reading at six PM on September the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at the city council chambers located at two hundred East McAlpin Street, and a meeting to adopt the tax rate on second reading at six PM on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at the city council chambers located at two hundred East McAlpin Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second, by Ms. Peterson, to adopt a tax rate of five two two one per one hundred valuation for tax year twenty twenty-three. I need a show of hands for yea.
Remember, ma'am, this is just to propose, to propose it for the meetings to adopt the tax rate, uh, not to adopt the tax rate, just to, just to clarify. That's all I'm clarifying.
Even though it says to adopt the tax rate.
It's, it's to propose to adopt the tax rate. So, so you're just setting the meetings to have a public...
But we still need a hand vote.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm asking for the hand vote. Yea. And no nays, it passes. Jesus Christ. Two hundred East McAlpin Street, we know where we are.
Don't you love the state?
Good Christ, Jesus. Item eight, consideration possible action on setting the date and time for public hearing on the city of Navasota's fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed budget.
The city manager filed the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget with the city secretary on August seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, and we are recommending that a public hearing for that proposed budget be held on Monday, September eleventh of twenty twenty-three, at a regularly called meeting of the city council to begin at six PM.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we set the date of September the eleventh, twenty twenty-three for the public hearing on the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second, by Mr. Folks, to set the date, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, for public hearing on the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, seeing none. I don't see you have to show hands on that one, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, we're adjourned.